Meeting to order at 6:01 PM. We're going to have the school choice hearing first, which I'm calling to order, and this meeting is being recorded. So, um, what do we do for the school choice?
So each year, the school committee decides whether or not to participate in school choice. If a district decides not to participate, it must notice by the state by June 1st, and it must also provide a reason for not electing to participate or not choosing to participate in school choice. One of the things that we'd like you to consider is the possible reductions that we'll be discussing tonight as a reason why we would not be recommending school choice at this time.
Okay, um, we have to make a motion before... Well, um, I would make a motion to not recommend school choice because of our budget constraints. And then we can have a discussion.
One second, Pat.
Thanks, okay. My feelings on it are we are facing a really difficult budget year, and school choice would, I think, negatively impact that because we do not necessarily get the cost back from opening our school to other students outside of our town. So I don't think that's something we should take on right now. Any thoughts they want to share?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So I know in the past, we have not had a school choice school. Has there been a time when we have been one?
Not that I'm aware of. I do know of one of our schools in Union 31 that has opened it up to certain grade levels because their enrollment was low, and they've used that additional funding to not for their local budget, but to fund additional projects.
Anyone else have a question? Should we take a vote? So all in favor of not participating in school choice? Katie?
Yes.
Lori?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Jessica?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, Lauren. And do I close this? And now I'll close the school choice hearing and open the regular meeting at 6:04 PM, and it's still being recorded. And we'll start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone tonight. I appreciate coming. And is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay, so three people. So we'll just start with Gordon and then go back and finish with Lori, if that's okay?
Would you have the section to speak in behalf of the presentation?
Um, I was going to, if I moved it, I was going to do it before the budget, but I was going to have people speak before the budget. We're moving the budget up, the discussion, if we vote on it, so I prefer to have the speakers now.
You may want to limit the amount of time for everybody, so that it's separate.
Okay, yeah, and in our policy, it says that comments should be limited to three minutes, so just if we could keep it to three minutes.
Okay. Can they hear you? Go up to the mic.
Yeah, you should go up to the mic. I believe people can't hear if you don't.
Okay.
Thank you. If you could say your name and...
Sure, Gordon Andrews, 244 Allen Street. I would just like to say that I know you guys have a big decision to make tonight. I would recommend that you cut to the $500,000 mark and a little more. You ask the tab to make up the rest of the cuts that they're asking you to make. It should be a shared change in responsibility. This increase that we have is definitely shared across the town, especially in Silver Lake, which has been the policy of the town for numerous years. I think if you're looking at the budget, asking the school committee to cut more than 10% to the regular day budget is a tremendous ask, and I don't think it's good for the quality of the education in school. I'd also like to point out that the enrollment numbers came out in October. We knew there was going to be a shift in costs at that point in time. The town should have been planning to look at these numbers, and we should have been looking at an override at that point in time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ms. Jennifer Dale. I hope that you will prepare to go. I just have a short letter from, Dear School Committee and members of the community, I am a current parent of Halifax Elementary and a resident in this town. I run my own CPA practice helping many nonprofits with their budget. I have learned that one outcome of the budget issue could be to reduce the number of teachers per grade. This will produce irreparable damage on our children. There are hundreds of articles and plenty of research surrounding the effect of class size and learning in children. In a grade of 90 students, they are currently in class sizes of 22 to 23 students. Eliminating a teacher will bring that class size up to 30. Many of these classrooms do not have a paraprofessional in there now to help with projects, behaviors, and students who need a break. The school seems to emphasize MCAS boards based on their goals set recently. In my opinion, this will only curb those boards. My child is at this school and is on an IEP, and she relies on these quality of class sizes for better learning. I beg that you try and find some other solutions. Are there any grants available to fund our existing programs? Can we defer any school repairs? Can administration take a 10% pay cut for a year? Can we charge a suggested administrative fee or entrance fee for sporting events? Can we rent out the facilities tomorrow and make some makeup? I hope you can continue to explore other options. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori King, a parent, educator, and president of the Halifax Teachers Union Association. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of our community's children and all the educators here in Halifax. We love the children of Halifax. We think of them as part of our family. We take pride in providing rich, high-quality instruction. We instill in our students the love of learning. We encourage them to ask questions, collaborate, and meet team players. As educators, we want our students to thrive and take with them the skills they will need to be successful in life. Halifax is a supportive community. We, as educators, have seen that Halifax has always invested in the education of our community's children. We understand we are facing financial challenges. We are all struggling with increased costs. However, reducing our school budget by 10% is going to greatly diminish our students' learning experiences and their quality of education. We are pleading with you to find ways to minimize the financial impact that is going to hit our community's school and ultimately our students. We ask for transparency in how these drastic increases have come about and what plans you have for the future to ensure that our students and community are not impacted again. At the end of the day, we all know ultimately Halifax students will be most impacted. As their teachers, we will always be here to advocate for them. We hope that you keep them, their educational needs, and their quality of learning experiences in mind when you're making your budgetary decisions this evening. Thank you for your time. Can I ask a couple of follow-up questions?
Sure.
You have three questions. Are there any cuts being made at the administrative level? Are there any ideas for generating revenues such as charging for buses? And is Halifax at this time in a deficit?
Um, I can't answer to what the cuts are until we have the presentation by Mr. Bowdre.
But are they at the administrative level?
You mean central office?
We typically don't do answer questions during this part, but we will, we purge your questions and we'll attempt to answer them in the presentation.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you for your thoughtful comment. All right, so now we will review and vote the regular minutes of March 4, 2024.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of March 4, 2024, as presented.
Wait a second. Ready to vote? Katie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, thank you. So the PAC draft and Pilgrim Area Collaborative Draft and possible vote. So this is renewing a draft we have for the Pilgrim Area Collaborative that we haven't updated since, what was it, like 20-something? 2013? 2013. So I read through it before the meeting. I don't know if everyone had the chance to or if anyone has questions.
I've read most of it.
Does anyone... So we could make a motion to approve the draft, so I can sign it.
So I'll make a motion to approve the collaborative agreement with Pilgrim Area Collaborative dated February 16, 2024, and approve our chair to sign.
Great. All right, Katie, for a vote?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. All right, so the shared cost agreement is also in the packet, which it talks about the costs that we share with the other elementary schools at the central office. Did everyone have a... Is there anything else I need to say about it?
It clarifies how we paid shared cost positions, not only for Union 31, but at the district level as well. A vote to approve would allow your chair to sign on behalf of the Halifax School Committee. It was recommended by Union 31 and the Silver Lake Committee in their last joint meeting.
Correct. Which actually, everyone was there. Does anyone have any questions or...
I have a motion to stop.
Okay.
I have a second.
All right, roll call. Katie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And myself as a yes.
but also for our audience in the recording as well. And I'm going to ask the chair to recognize both our business director, Director of Operations and Finance, and Principal Bowdre. They will be speaking to the slides in today's presentation. The rest of us may have other things to add, but the majority of the slides will be handled by Sarah and Kane.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'm going to start with the changes between the version 2 and version 3 budget. So as you know, there's been a lot of work done all along with the budget, and I wanted to include any changes that may have happened since we saw you last. So the Halifax version 3 changes, I found and removed from some pre-K of district tuitions from the budget, which reduced the budget by $215,990. Special education transportation was then adjusted, and I removed $120,934. There were some special education tuition adjustments, which reduced the budget $609. We allocated additional $240 grant, that's the IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act grant. We allocated an additional $37,205, and I created a line to put the $240 grant and the circuit breaker offset in, it's called tuition offset. There was no change to the budget. Because of that, that total changes between version 2 and version 3 reduced the budget by $374,738. Moving on to version 4 budget, we allocated $40,571 from the REAP grant to offset technology purchases, and we received a confirmed retirement, which reduces the budget by $39,102. So it was an additional reduction of $79,673. Changes to the Silver Lake budget since I last saw you. So Silver Lake is on the version 5 budget. There were 32 lines that had salary adjustments and reduced the Silver Lake budget by $290,428. We received a technology grant for hardware, which reduced the budget by $70,000. We moved the Silver Lake Integrated Preschool Supplies, or $40,000 of Silver Lake Integrated Preschool Supplies into the Preschool Revolving Account, which reduced the budget by $40,000. There was an additional $413,556 in additional out-of-district tuitions and transportation that were added to the budget, and then there was an insurance adjustment of $111,704. So the Silver Lake budget between version 4 and version 5 increased to $124,842. So the Halifax proposed version 5 budget of $7,465,138.43 will require a reduction of $704,194.74 to meet the threshold set by the town for the total cost of education for FY '25. So after Silver Lake voted their budget and voted to use money from excess and deficiency to offset the assessments, I reworked all of the assessments. The Halifax assessment for FY '25 is $8,615,217.71, which is a $3,032,960.25 increase, which is an increase of 54.3%. The total cost of education for Halifax would be $15,376,161.40, which is a $517,752.27 increase, which represents a 3.5% change. This is the increase with the cuts that the town asked for. So the next question is, why is there an increase in the total cost of education? So I know a lot of you were at the March 14 Silver Lake School Committee meeting. A lot of these slides come from that slide deck. So the overall, during FY '24, this current school year, we added staff that weren't part of the FY '24 budget. So in Halifax, there were 1.5 teachers and two paraprofessionals added to the building, and then there were a number of positions added elsewhere. And the middle school, high school, and pre-K positions that were added during this school year are now part of the assessments. So really, on this slide, the salaries that aren't showing up for the Halifax budget are those four paraprofessionals that were added at Kingston Elementary School. Everything else is either directly part of the Halifax budget or part of the assessment. On the next slide, we had put together a year-to-year comparison of special education costs. So during this current year, this school year, there was $980,720.18 unbudgeted costs. So these are amounts that we either didn't know about, or they just weren't budgeted for, or it may be placement of a student going out at this, partially through the year. So Halifax has an additional $276,47.69 in tuitions and $86,115.15 in transportation. In addition to those costs, the current costs for FY '24, there's additional costs for FY '25 of $135,930.65 in tuition and $88,432 in transportation. So when we talk about special education numbers, we're looking at what was the FY '24 budget minus the students that are going to be paid out of Silver Lake, plus these current FY '24 costs, plus these FY '25 costs, plus any increases that the state has allowed So going to the next slide. This is a diagram of what education looked like in FY '24. So in all three towns, there are the parts of the budget that are within the walls of the building, and that is in the box right underneath the school where it says "Regular Ed" and "Special Ed." Over on the left-hand side, we have out-of-district vocational students. That is part of the town budget. On the right-hand side, out-of-district special ed students. And for this year, that includes students in grades K through 6. It includes pre-K students and students in grades 7 through 12-plus. It also includes tuitions that are paid to what we're going to refer to as Silver Lake Staff Revolving Programs. So a student that attends a program in Kingston at the middle school, there is money coming from a tuition line going into a revolving account and then paying for staff. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has asked us to stop that practice. So if you take a look at the FY '25, in the towns for FY '25, the budget that you see has the regular ed expenses and the special ed expenses within what happens within the walls of the school. The town is still responsible for the out-of-district vocational programs. And then out-of-district special education, grades K through 6, will be paid for by the towns. And then pre-K and 7 through 12-plus are the responsibility of Silver Lake next year. Next slide, please. So this graphic shows the shift in the money over the, from FY '24 to FY '25. So in FY '24, there's $156,500 budgeted and being paid for out-of-district vocational students. That's students at Bristol County Agricultural High School, Norfolk County Agricultural High School, South Shore Voc Tech, any vocational program that we don't have in district. That's what that is. There is $5,225,699.95 budgeted for regular education expenses at Halifax Elementary School. $1,134,145.72 in special education expenses here at Halifax Elementary School. There is $2,179,394.62 budgeted for out-of-district students, that is pre-K to 7 to 12-plus. And then there's $580,411.38, which is budgeted for students that are attending Silver Lake revolving programs. So the staff at their programs, at the middle school, at the high school, at the preschool, these are the funds in FY '24 that are being charged to Halifax. In FY '25, out-of-district vocational, $156,500 is proposed for regular education. Within this building is $5,563,151.64. For special education within this building, $1,691,433.74. The K through 6, out-of-district special education, after we've taken out any circuit breaker, anticipated circuit breaker funds, is going to be $45,338.5. The next slide talks about Silver Lake, so the same type of year-to-year graphic comparison in FY '25. In Silver Lake, there are, within the buildings of Silver Lake, there's $29,600,000 budgeted for regular education and special education. At the middle school and the high school, there's $1,958,706.75 in staff for programs where Halifax and Kingston and Plington pay tuition for students to attend those programs. There are no Silver Lake revolving programs at Halifax Elementary School. There is a Silver Lake, there are Silver Lake revolving programs at Kingston Elementary and Kingston Intermediate School, and the staff associated with those programs have been budgeted $581,553.19 for this current year. And there are currently no revolving programs at Dennett Elementary School. Again, those revolving programs, we were told by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to discontinue that. And so in FY '25, within the buildings of Silver Lake would be regular education, $26,567,815.64. Special education, $4,601,093.40. And the Silver Lake Integrated Preschool Program, $2,110,342.10. And that's all within Silver Lake programming. And then outside of the walls of the building is the pre-K and the 7 through 12-plus out-of-district special education, which is proposed at $7,268,519.39. So the next slide talks about the increased costs in FY '25. Again, this is a slide that came from the slide deck on March 14 for Silver Lake. So contractual obligations applies to all four entities, Halifax, Kingston, Plington. When you look at contractual obligations, that is everything from teacher salaries that have been negotiated to the cost of, we have contracts for coffee machines, for elevator maintenance, so that's the, there have been increasing costs for everything. Health insurance at Silver Lake has, the cost has increased, and that is in the assessment that's going to Halifax. There have been increased costs in special education, transportation, and tuition, and the cost of supplies and utilities have increased. What do we do next?
So we have a meeting scheduled April 3 with the Finance Committee, and we will be attending with our chair to discuss our budget proposals after tonight's meeting. In addition, we have met with the building principal and as a district leadership team to discuss possible reductions for the school committee to consider this evening. And as per your request, Principal Bowdre has presented them in a three-tier fashion.
All right, thanks, y'all. So these, when Ryan and I were looking at the cuts, we were just kind of putting these priorities out there, hoping we're looking to maintain. So one of the top there is maintaining class size for tier 1 instruction. Our class sizes are pretty good, 8 through 6 right now, and that's kind of what this will show, go through it. We also wanted to make sure that we're maintaining the offerings for our special classes, even though that we're reducing, we're proposing a reduction in our special school. We also wanted to make sure that support systems still stay intact as best as possible. But again, $704,000 is a large number, so we did kind of get creative and try to cut down as many areas as possible. Next one there is trying to use the grant that we have, and we're looking to propose reducing our math specialist. There's Title I funds that we've been working with our coordinator to kind of help us out in terms of, even though reducing the math specialist, we can still try and make, keep it at a full-time, just... it at a full-time, just funded differently like it was previously to this past year. And then special ed, the requirements of special ed have increased for next year. There's a new IP process. So there, we're anticipating a pretty heavy burden on our, on our IP, on our special ed team. So we have to kind of keep an eye on that and make sure that the services continue as planned. And then the EL services, we have to take into consideration because Kingston would be taking back the current ELL person that's here in Halifax, who we contracted out. So that was, as I said, we talked about it at the last meeting, to keep, to add that into our budgets since it wasn't in there previously. So what Brian and I, we've been working on this for about a month now with Sarah, Dave, Chris, and Jill and Ryan. So this first tier here is, we were asked to go to somewhere in the ballpark of $300,000. So we just put the category up left, the amount, and then the impact is what we're looking at. So the first one is a building utilization fund, $53,000. And the impact on that, we have to do with that revolving fund would be completed. The next one is supply lines for teaching and custodial. Basically, cut every supply line we could possibly think of to get to that $101,000. And that's in coordination with Melissa Farah, curriculum coordinator, we had text lines. We talked with the tech director, Steve Tello. He also kind of made cuts to line items as well. And then talking with our custodial staff, making cuts in contracted services and anywhere else that we could, and then our TJ department as well, we're also cutting. Transportation, what we're proposing is, we currently have 10 buses. We're proposing that we reduce that to eight buses. Based upon our enrollment currently, we have buses that, we have, I think there's one bus that might be as low as 29, and it might be one bus that might be as high as 79. So with our enrollment at roughly 550, what we could do there is, there's 71 students that are on the bus, we could easily go down to eight buses. But in, in that, we realize that buses will be much more built in capacity, routes will be longer, and we could see an increase as well with our pickup and drop-off ones. Support staff, we're looking at two full-time equivalents that would obviously look to less support and foster for students and staff. And the last item there in tier one is reducing one of our custodians from a 1.0 to a 2.5. So therefore, any impact on that, we'll be looking at prioritizing areas that need to be cleaned throughout the day. We currently only have four custodians on staff. And building is large, it's a challenge to begin with, but we were pretty much going, looking at all departments that we could. So the total for tier one was $313,000. Down here is level-two cuts, that once, when we combine level one and level two, we're looking at $554,000. So again, no area is, kind of, let's, they were looking at a principal contract that would impact the summer support. And Brian is, is there. The next one is cutting 2.4 full-time equivalents from the HTA. That is three position, technically, it's three positions between behaviors, the instrument position that we just added last year, one of our two re-institutions. And that would account for $168,000. Then we added two more support staff in this level as well. And again, just like in level one, it would be less classrooms, provisions, students in classrooms. Then we added, we have two main office staff. We are proposing reducing one of those to a 2.8 position. And then obviously, the main office is probably close to 700 people, including students and staff on a regular basis. And there's four people in the main office, so that would be a reduction there. So there must be, basically, that closing door, answering phone calls. Then, next page is tier-three cuts, getting to 704,000. This was proposing cutting 1.9 FTE. That would be one classroom teacher. And reducing our five specialist teachers to 0.9. They go from 1.0 to a 0.9. And then the last item there is our math interventionist, what I mentioned earlier, two slides ago, was reducing our math interventionist, who's a 1.0, to 0.6. And then it could be offset to 0.4, maybe funded through a grant for Title I, working with Melissa Farah. And that in total, and that tier is $150,000 for a total of 704,000.
One of the things that was asked in the opening, we have asked our principals to once again in our next meeting to present facilities use form update and potentially considering changing the amounts and updating the amounts for facilities use. So that was one of the questions that was announced, that was asked earlier. In terms of administrative cuts, Principal Bowdre has presented his proposal. And then, I think we answered all of the questions through the presentation, but if we didn't, let me know and I can...
What was the other, sorry?
Other than passing the central office meeting?
They said they were going to reduce one of the office staff to 0.8, correct? Oh, she means the central, oh, central, sorry, my bad, central.
We will be meeting with Silver Lake on April 9th.
Okay. So now we can have a discussion? Okay. So I guess I'll, I have some notes. So we do have a pattern of declining enrollment at HTS for the last 10 years. And we had a larger kindergarten class, obviously, but that doesn't mean every year is going to be larger and one, it was an anomalous trend at this point. But if we look at, that we could reduce some classrooms in certain grade levels where they would still be under 23 students per classroom, which I believe is still pretty And I feel like we need to address what our actual enrollment is versus, you know, what it has been for a long time and how we run things. And we're also going to be struggling next year to, because a lot of our circuit breaker money is going to be going to Silver Lake. So we're going to face another, more difficulties next year. So I would like to, and I should have started with, and I'm really sorry, I love all of the teachers at our school, and I'm torn up that we're in this position, and I hate the decisions we have to make, and there's no good decision. There's absolutely no good way to do this. But the town can't afford it, and, and we can't present something to the town, they won't pass. And so it's a really awful position to be in, honestly, because I care a lot about all of you. You've taught all my kids, a lot of you, not everyone, but I just want to say from a human standpoint, this is really awful. And it's, I do, you know, and I've lost sleep over it. I've, you know, been thinking about it ever since we found out how much the increases are. And I wanted to start out by saying that, not just, but, and I want to make the best, do the best thing by our students. And preserve education. We have a great school here. And do things that are sustainable and data-driven, which everyone's wonderful about. But I mean, I do think we really need to take into account actual enrollment and actual class sizes in certain grades, not all of the grades, because we do have some class, some grades with larger class sizes. So I wouldn't propose that we would reduce those grades, but it's definitely something that I would, I think we really need to look at because it's, it's a way we can reduce costs without a decline in educational services.
Lauren, can I just add? I think that it's really important that we look at all these different conversations. It doesn't mean that's where we land, but I think we have to talk about it, and I feel the same way. Both of my kids went through HTS. I see all of you around town. You know, I have a great affection for the school and the students in it and staff in it. And it's a really hard position to be sitting here and, you know, thinking about the human element of the job that we're tasked to do. So, but I do think it's important for us to talk about it before we make decisions. I think we should be talking about all the options, and I hope that the folks that are here listening will understand that that is just part of this very difficult process.
Anything else?
Any questions?
Sure.
So would you happen to answer whether either the whole grade class size for K through six or the average individual class size, K through six?
So by, which is not the number for, for grade level?
Which one's easier? If you have like the average class size or do you have how many students are in each grade generally?
I have each grade, but, is that right?
Yes.
All right. So kindergarten, is that 90? First grade is at 67. Second grade is at 69. Third grade is at 77. Fourth grade is at 70. Fifth grade is at 83. Sixth grade is at 92.
And obviously, sixth grade's moving on to the middle school. But I calculated for next year. Do you have, I have it if you don't have it. But for kindergartens, to be determined. I did it for going down on all grades to three classrooms, which again, is not something I think is appropriate for every grade, but just so we have the information. For first grade, it would be 30. Second grade would be 22. Third grade would be 23. Fourth grade would be 25. Fifth grade would be 23, and sixth grade would be 27. But given that, I don't think it would be appropriate. I think we should leave kindergarten because we don't know what the enrollment would be. First grade is way too many to, so I would want to leave that at four. And also, oh, actually, sorry. Yeah, and then sixth grade would be 27, so I also think that that should be four teachers as well.
Does that change any? Is it, so if we hypothetically do drop one or two teachers, then, then is it contractually like a nightmare for them? Because then we're going to have to move teachers around to different grades almost all the time?
Yes.
Right? Like, that's going to, not...
Well, it is, but it's also what a lot of schools around us do to you.
So why, what do you mean all the time?
Well, I mean, if they're, like, same kind of second-grade teacher, third-grade teacher, but then the big classes coming out, then we need to add, where do we pull from to put it in there? You know what I mean? It's, we're going to have to move classrooms here.
I feel like that happens a lot here anyway, but yeah, I'll sort of send them from year to year. So...
I think before you even go into what we're talking about, I would love to hear the comments on the tier cuts. Because we, we have a different philosophy. We don't want to cut classroom teachers. That's the last thing we want to do. We've talked for almost 20 years. If you can have classrooms under 20, you can do a lot of good. So I think you have a certain approach. We have a certain approach. What is wrong with the cuts? I'm curious. There are teacher cuts up there. There are also, I have to find my doctor in the office. I'm cutting myself. My office is cutting, my custodians being cut. There are cuts being made, but Kane and I both believe we want to have small classrooms. We want to have tier-one instruction, best tier-one instruction classroom. So if you disagree with that, then we can have a conversation, but comment on the tier cuts. I'm curious. What's wrong with the cuts?
Well, I'm concerned about the model of school and the fiscal ability to manage continuing to pay for the, I'm, I'm looking at it from the fiscal management of declining enrollment, which we have at Silver Lake. It's a model problem, where if our enrollment is declined in quite a few grades, and, I mean, I did have back and forth with Mr. Bowdre, and he said ideal is 17 to 23. So if we're still within those bounds. And I also am concerned about cutting aid in the classroom. You know, the people that come in and provide aid, because from my understanding, people are still behind. And that's, those are my concerns. But I am most concerned about us not paying attention to the enrollment decline. And as a town, that we can't, I can't keep going to the town saying we need to staff this school when we have less and less students.
I'm concerned in one cut, I have certified classroom educators. That's what I'm concerned about. And I'm concerned that we won't get those positions back.
Well, I feel like it, well, okay, go ahead, Karen.
So as far as the way that I look at the numbers, if we were to cut two grade-level classroom teachers, that would bring next year, please correct me if I'm wrong, I just did this math quickly, so that, just regarding kindergarten, of course, because we don't know. But class sizes would be 22, 22, 23, 25, 23, 21. So we're making class size equal across the entire school district so that every child is getting the same kind of classroom setting, same kind of...
Okay, so you're making those cuts, so where, so what would you add?
I personally would add behaviors back. I think that that's a very necessary position in the school. We've talked in the past how she basically wears roller skates because she's so busy. And so to cut that one position, I think is, is, you know, important for you to consider because it means that there's going to be far more work on your plate. And then you're only one person.
Cutting teachers, though, is, has a, just classroom teachers has a much further impact than just class size.
I think that should be the last thing that we look at, is cutting teachers.
And I think primary grades definitely, research shows that primary grades should have lower class numbers, and typically, we'd go up to the middle and high school grades. Obviously, those numbers are appropriate to have larger numbers, but when you're going from 17 or 18, which is an ideal number in primary classrooms, K to three, if you're adding five, six, even eight more students in those rooms, it's a huge challenge for classroom teachers.
So you're telling me that the children that are in grade, current grade on, in current grade six, aren't getting the same level of education as the children that are in the other grades? Because that's exactly what's happening to them, exactly what you're saying. It's a big challenge to have six, seven more kids. So that's what the sixth graders have done, which is seven years. And that's what the first graders are going to be faced with unless we change it. And this is a time and space where so finally, addressing that way of class size in this building has been going on for years. So you're saying, even your words were, it's costly to this child's education to have six or seven more students. So that means grades one and six are getting a different level of education than grades two through five, if I got that right. So what we're saying is at least, at the very least, let's, let's level the playing field for all of our kids. Let's have all of our kids have the same classroom experience. Because the new, the new numbers, unless I was wrong, are within one or two students per classroom. And the good part is we keep the behaviorists, we keep the math interventionists, well, I guess you said you could find that, other reading specialists, and all the support staff that can benefit all the children, K through six of the district, all of the children have access to those positions that you want to cut. And I, I think it's so important to have those resources because we don't know when or where those kids are going to need it. And those are people that are fluid and can go ahead and move to the kids that are in the highest need. And every child will now have the same opportunity to access students by making that student-to-teacher ratio almost the same throughout K through six. That's how I feel. That's my position. Do I want to cut a teacher? Absolutely not. But if we have to cut somebody, I... But if we have to cut somebody, I, I do not want to take away those support staffs that certainly have high needs, still are need. And that we can pull and get to those kids in need at any time.
And my concerns too are if we're pulling support out of the classroom, our, I, you know, our special education is going up. And I'm very concerned about next year if we come back and have to cut the same amount. We're gonna have to cut all the support staff and then we're still gonna have to cut classroom teachers. So I feel like, and it's really not fair to the kids who happen to be in a bigger class size. So they're getting less of an educational experience. Shouldn't we be adjusting for that? I mean, so, but I do feel like it's an opportunity. And I'm very concerned about our budget for next year. And worried about if we do this now, this seems a little bit like a Band-Aid, you know, a situation. And we lose a lot of support. And I mean, I know there's concerns because we discussed it about what happens with the specialists. But I feel like this is our time to be creative. Could they help out, you know, with something or something, I don't, you know, or something like where we can use people in more ways if they're a little bit more available with the people that are already in the building? Like, I don't, you know, we, um, but that's, I, I'm worried about what we're bringing to the town and the sustainability of our actual budget. And it's hard to say to the town, you have to go out without other services because we want our kids and, you know, classes that are actually okay with twenty-three students. You know, that's kind of asking for a lot from the town. And I mean, I'm coming, and I'm coming from a parent and as a town member and representing the budget. And so, I mean, we would love everything to be ideal and have all the money in the world to give to our school. But we have to think of the total picture and not just, okay, we can cut this. And like, I don't want people to go without pay for a long time. Like, how sustainable is that for Mr. DeSantis's family? Like, it's a matter of let's build a model that works and be creative with how we apply it.
And I, I do think that's, that's what we had proposed here with cutting so many different areas. And I think that having those classroom teachers, it's, again, it's not just reducing class sizes. I mean, we're, when we do that as well, we're going to impact specialists. Their case loads will be, will be lower. We'll have to force the teacher to move every single year. And then also the town will be on the hook for unemployment for all those classroom teachers that we just cut. So I think, I, I don't know what's, I really don't know. None of these cuts are good, but just like which cuts are better than the other cuts. And that's, and we're thinking that our classroom teachers, they're, they're highly trained in, in ELA, in math and SCL. Like, I think that's, that's important that those are the ones that are trained in that. The other people are not, but I think that it's, it's difficult. Because we will have a challenge of, you know, providing contractual time for teachers. Because if we don't have enough, they'll, they have prep times in their, built into their schedules when they're at specialists. So I'm not even sure how that would work or what would be appropriate. And if you're asking like, you need to put like a music teacher to go in and teach math or ELA, that wouldn't be ideal.
Well, that's not what I'm asking. I'm saying they could cover a class though, right? Or, I mean, it's, I mean, it would require a lot of work. I mean, frankly, but is that always a bad thing to change things up?
I think what he's saying is he wants to keep the, the licensure for the students. So having someone in a classroom that doesn't have that same licensure is not as effective as someone with appropriate licensure.
But if we have the same class, if we just have more kids in the classroom, how does that impact the teacher being in the classroom with them? Like, why would especially more kids in a classroom, that was gonna impact, like, then they're gonna need more of the support staff. And I think that we keep, I don't, I don't know why we're going directly to cutting, like, there's so many other things on this list that we could cut out.
Why are we going with teachers first? I like the bus idea.
Well, the other one has teachers as well. It's just a matter of how you do it. I mean, it's, and, and I actually, well, if we, I mean, I wanted to talk about buses too. And because the bus in my neighborhood is pretty empty. And so, I mean, could we go back to like COVID times where you commit to ride the bus or you don't? And then we get the number of buses we need for the number of students?
Can you charge to ride the bus?
I have like one hundred and fifty dollars per.
I know, but we can't charge because it's a regional school district.
Can we charge to ride the bus? So, like, I'm broke, I was. But you're, you're mixing issues.
Yeah, I know.
So let's, let's take one thing at a time, okay? We, we never charged during COVID and we never eliminated buses during COVID. So let's not, let's.
Oh, I didn't say that. I meant, yeah, no, we'll get back to that, I'm sorry.
So the other part is, is that Halifax is not a regional school district. But it shares buses with a regional school district. And so, again, I think you'd need to decide whether or not you wanted to charge for your elementary buses. And what would, who, who would be, what would, what would your radius be? And would you provide transportation for all kindergarten students and grade one students? Or would it be, you know, just a, a radius type of thing? Where anyone beyond a certain radius gets charged a certain amount to ride the bus? Those decisions would need to be made if that's the direction you want to go in. And it wouldn't necessarily, we'd have to work carefully with the bus company to determine, to make sure that we're not violating any regional commitments for regional buses.
Okay, we can come back to that, Karen.
Just to circle back to where we were. It's no secret that I'm a teacher and the last thing I want to do is cut teachers. But I'm here to support our children of this town. And what I see as what's best for kids is to make class size equitable across the school. And I've been arguing that for years anyway. So I believe what would be best for kids is not to have some students having a class size of seventeen to one and other students have a class size of, what is it, twenty-three, I think was the highest one. Well, not great because they'll be gone, but twenty-three to one, right? Mr. Voder just said it's really difficult to have five or six kids to a classroom and expect the same level of education. Well, that's what we're doing every day with these kids, every day, their entire school career, their entire elementary school career. So I think what's financially responsible and what's best for our kids as a whole is to make that equity across all the grades. And we can make class size almost exactly the same by making that. And what's important, what's important is keeping the access supports in place that all grade levels have access to. So the, the two things that I've heard, aside from the emotional piece, of course, right? But the two things that I've heard that disagree with that is one, that, um, that teachers would have to move around more. And during a previous meeting, it was maybe last June, I asked Mr. Voder, do my teachers move so much here? Because to me, it doesn't seem to be a good idea. And you said your philosophy was it's great for teachers to move. You think that it's wonderful for teachers to have different experiences in different places and times. So that should not be an argument as far as I can see for why teachers should move. I forget the other argument, I guess it was, because I think it's long. But I feel like, again, not what I, I'm not, I, I don't want to be the villain here. And I'm not trying to be, I'm trying to think about what's best for kids, all kids, K through six. That's where I'm coming from.
But we don't know what the enrollment's gonna be. It's all, so over the next couple of years, are we gonna be able to hire two teachers back that we lost? Because what if there's, we continue to have ninety, ninety-two enrollments, eighty threes?
But we're focusing on next year right now. What does next year?
Well, I agree with you except, and I feel like it's easier for us to go to the town and say we need to hire another teacher than support staff. I think we would have an easier time making a case for a teacher than getting a support staff we'd be losing.
I would argue that keeping class sizes small, pre-K through two, as students are learning to read and transitioning to reading to learn, is research-based and sound. It may not be equitable, much to my dismay, as a former history teacher in a high school. I understand that my class size was not going to be the same as other places. But I can't deny the research about learning to read for young children. And so I just want to put that out there that we can't always have the same class sizes for every class.
But so we're keeping, we would keep four kindergarten. And right now, the current kindergarteners are twenty-two and next year they'll be twenty-two. We're not touching grade one. We're not touching kindergarten. Grade two would increase slightly. So we're not touching those primary levels. K one, K is not being touched. One, we're keeping four, so it would still be the same exact size. And two would slightly increase.
Can I ask why, if we knew that we could have a grant that would help fund the math interventionist, why have this left to tier three and not put to tier one? Especially if we're not losing that person and there's really, it doesn't seem from at least first glance. Maybe I'm missing something that we, other than, in other words, we're not losing that person and they're still working full-time. So why wasn't that included in tier one? Am I missing something?
No, I, I mean, in terms of the tier, if we, as we've kind of worked through it, we just really.
Okay, because it seems like that should be a no-brainer. If we know that we can fund that another way, that should be an easy, okay, let's just do that one.
Right.
Yeah, I have another question too, Katie.
I mean, again, these are, this is just a proposal we kind of can't say.
Okay. I didn't know if this was like a list of priorities that you had and this is why it was presented in this order? Or if, I guess I didn't, I.
There's been so many iterations of it. It's, it's been, you know, moved, I mean, daily then trying to help with the class size.
And I'm personally very glad that, that we're not cutting the math interventionist. Because it has always been my feeling that every school should have a math interventionist. I feel like we're very strong on providing support for reading, but math is left by the wayside way too many times. And our students need math just as much as they need reading. So I'm glad that we found a way to reduce the impact to our school budget, yet keep that person full-time.
I have a couple of questions about what happens with some of the reductions on tier one. So, you know, offset from building utilization, you've got here that the impact isn't, it completes the revolving line. So what would that fund be used for next year? What would be the implications of that?
So that is, uh, that, building utilization is, is, uh, for years it's been when we rent out space here in the building. And I think just, it would be, uh, that naturally has built up. I think we used to use a classroom here, we rented out to a collaborative program. And that's where each year we just kind of, we put it in there.
Do you withdraw from that fund for anything?
I haven't, no.
Okay, so that seems like that's a good option to go with.
I think that's what Jill was saying too, is that looking at the rental agreements that we have with Jill, it would be a lot of fun.
Yeah.
We propose that in the next meeting.
What about, so the next one's supply lines. When you say limited funds available, are we talking if you cut that amount, hundred and one thousand dollars? We're gonna be, um, the teachers are gonna be supplying those types of things? Are we gonna have custodians buying bleach on their own? I'm just curious, like, where are we gonna get that?
It's all aligned with custodial supplies, teaching supplies, uh, technology. Our, one of our tech lines was also, so it was pretty much looking at, at a banking contract and services. So those were five areas that we were looking at.
So where does, how does that impact the quality of the education? Or like, where do you make up? Because I'm assuming that those things you budgeted for in those five areas, you still need to some degree around the school. So like, how do you, like, I'm curious about what the impact of some of these other things is. You know, when I look at transportation, I've heard for as long as I've lived in this town, parents complaining about busing. And for some of the challenges that we have in terms of how do we reduce buses? Or how do we charge for buses because of our contract with the regional system? I've heard of a lot of bus times, I've heard of buses being late to bring kids to school. Like, there's a lot of pain points with buses. So I'm not opposed to that, but I just want to hear more about when we take these things out, what is the actual impact? Because I do think the public has a right to know what the future looks like for them before we make a decision on what we're cutting. We're talking a lot about staff. And I'm, you know, I, I hate talking about staff, but I, you know, I do tend to think that, you know, there is some room, some wiggle room. And I don't want to see behaviorists gone. I don't want to see the reading specialists gone. Support staff reduced. I think that we just need to be looking at this instead of with a cleaver, with a scalpel when we make these cuts. So I would like to hear more about the impact of, of, you know, where, where the funds are gonna come from for some of these things to be used.
Kane, do you have a list from Melissa and Steve as to some of the things that they would cut?
Uh, I can, yes.
Um, are we have a question?
Hi there. My name is Lauren KoShank. I'm a first grade teacher. And I just want to say that Kane and Ryan have created an impossible task of an ever-changing number of budget cuts without any flexibility or creative solutions from the town. The number has been increasing, increasing, increasing. And even with that impossible task, they have come up with a proposed cuts. And I'm just wondering about trusting their expertise and leadership when they have done something that has been incredibly difficult. And as teachers, you are here to say that we support them and their expertise and leadership. And I just feel like there has not been enough discussion on the proposal that was given, that they spent time working on. I feel like there's a lot of other conversations and I'm wondering why their proposal with the number that they were asked to give is not an acceptable solution. So I'm asking what the impact of the proposal is. Thank you, Lauren.
I, I feel like we've given a consideration, except that you're not considering it and just, I don't want to speak very loudly, but I know that I personally said I don't want to lose the interventionist, the support staff and the reading specialist. So that's, that's my position. And I thought that that was clear. So it's not that I don't want teachers, it's that I also don't want to lose.
It sounds like, it sounds like.
I'm really sorry it sounds like that. I know it's a painful, horrible topic. And again, I can fully empathize, I know that. But when I look at kids, at all of the kids who go in K through six, I think what's most important is to give each of them the same education. So to have one child have a seventeen to one student-to-teacher ratio and another child have a twenty-three to one, that's not the same education.
Wouldn't matter the other way.
And we have to make cuts and we can make that equal across and keep the support staff, the interventions. I mean, I don't know, my kids didn't really access those, I don't know personally. But I'm assuming that those support staff are really important for kids, for all kids, K through six. All kids have access to those. So that's my feeling about looking at the school and what's best for education. It's not that they're discounting the work that the administration did or their presentation. I'm saying, looking at kids, K through six kids, let's make it the same education in every classroom.
Do you have research about that?
What research?
That kindergarten class size should be K through six.
I'm not touching kindergarten. Uh, I mean, not me, but we're not, I didn't say that we should change kindergarten. I said that we should, my, me personally, what I said is that we would keep getting up to four teachers.
You think it's more equitable? I'm just wondering if you have research back from your claim that it should be equitable in K through six?
I didn't say that. Like, the, the K and the one are still gonna, I'm not, so next year's first graders have the same class size they have this year. They're going to have the same class size they have this year. And Mr. Voder, your principal, said that adding five or six more kids to a classroom changes the quality of education. And that's what we have right now. We have classes that have five to six more kids per classroom than other classes.
Ask me to find out, Sarah.
I have five, oh, you trust your principal's expertise? You just got up here and said that, his leadership and expertise, and he said. His leadership and expertise, and he said, he told us, he advised us, that by having five or six extra kids in a room decreases quality of education.
Dr. Tru and Dr. Fred, Mr. Bodry has said that there are research-based articles that we can all pull up right now to say that class size matters, especially in number of grades. And I've just been wondering, if it's more equitable, what research you have back there?
You mentioned it.
Yes.
Maybe if you reminded your folks that everyone shouldn't talk to the teachers.
Yes, everyone should actually be talking to me. Thank you. And the other thing I will note that, I mean, I spoke with Mr. Bodry, and this is not an easy thing to do. This is not something we want to do at all. And, and yes, I fully know I'm not a trained educator. I one-hundred percent know that. And I've talked to people for months because I knew this was coming. Because, well, I shouldn't say I knew it was coming, but I was concerned. I mean, I was surprised at the first budget meeting, I should say. I found out then. But Mr. Bodry told me that, he said in an email, having primary classrooms ranging from twenty-two to thirty is not ideal versus having seventeen to twenty-three, which is a range I was given, which is where I based my opinions on from your principal. So, I'm, and I'm trying to think, I mean, it's absolutely true in the last ten years that class enrollment at HES has gone down. We've gone from five-hundred-and-ninety to five-hundred-and-forty-one. That's fifty students. And we don't know what's going to happen in the next year. So, we're trying to take what we have now and keep it within the classroom sizes that Mr. Bodry told me were acceptable, seventeen to twenty-three. So, that's where I'm coming from.
But also, that's only part of it. Because when you're talking K to three, you know, those numbers should be at the lower end of the seventeen. And that's what we were talking here, and I think that's what we're discussing. Whereas you would see the numbers four, five, and six, those numbers twenty-three, twenty-five are more appropriate.
So, if we adjusted four, five, and six instead, would that be more palatable? As far as, because, I mean...
I'm just, like, cutting classroom teachers should be the first step. I just, that's...
Well, I'm talking about our actual enrollment, though. I mean, our kids have been getting a quality education at HES with as many kids in the classroom as our current sixth-grade class. We've made it work, right? Have we made it work?
We always make it work.
We always make it work. So, we have to come before the town and tell them we're keeping classroom teachers. Or, I mean, and also, I mean, honestly, I feel like all the teachers contribute here. And I'm not an educator, but with my kids here, I feel like everyone's valuable. And classifying, I mean, you know, is kind of hard for me, you know? Like, as far, Mrs. Ready?
Sorry, I have a question. And Jen, ready? Kindergarten teacher? You know, I want to just be respectful, because I know I'm not, you guys all had a tough decision to make. I mean, and that's hard, I understand. But I mean, I have, I just wanted to point out a couple things. Like, I've done here twenty-eight years. And this year, I mean, because kids move in after you make the classes and stuff, like, one grade had five kids move in this year, and our grade had a couple move in. So, I mean, kindergarten, we all started out equitable, but now, like, one of our kindergarten classes has twenty-four kids, and one has twenty-two. So, it doesn't always win the way you think it's gonna win. And the past few years, except we've had lower class sizes, we have like eighteen. But having twenty-three this year, I mean, that's almost like a third of a class that was added this year, and it is harder. I'm not gonna say that. But when you say that you're trying to make more classes equitable, it feels like you're going on the higher side. Do you know what I mean? Like, I understand, we'll make them more equitable. But if some grades have twenty-five, it doesn't sound high, but like, when you're actually in the classroom, twenty-five is a pretty high number. Twenty-three is a pretty high number, or twenty-four is a pretty high number in kindergarten. When you're, like, kids are, and you're trying to teach them to read and stuff. So, I mean, on paper, that doesn't necessarily look like a lot of kids, you know, like a lot of kids. But when you're trying to teach them, and, you know, in kindergarten, we don't all have full-time pairs. I mean, that's, it is a lot of kids. And I just wanted to point out the fact that kids do move in too. Like I said, one grade level had five kids move in. Any kids move out? But, so, it's not, it's like right now, I live, okay, one grade might have twenty-five across a grade level. Let's say five kids move in, you know what I mean? So, then it's, then you're up to twenty-six, twenty-seven. So, my point is that, you know, it's not always like just a set in stone number. It can change stuff.
No, I understand.
Like I said, I'm very respectful. I know you have a big, you know, big decision to make, but I just want...
And that's why we're discussing it, honestly. We're trying to, um...
Have to err on the side of the higher class and then have them move in, like, just to make it, to say to make it equitable, then it's, it's hard because you're making it equitable on the higher end, do you know what I mean? So, I don't know.
But a lot of it's honestly chance. Because you don't know how many kids are born that year, right? Like, your educational experience is different because of what year you were born, how many kids are in here. I don't actually, I feel like the education is very high-quality here, and how can we make our budget more sustainable? Because it's going to be bad next year as well. And it's...
Kindergarten class is the one we need to...
I'm just saying, yeah.
If, like, we keep on the trend, right, we had a trend for those three years. But now, it looks like we're moving back up again. So, then we're just worried, like...
Well, we kind of have to take it year by year, too. I mean, it's, it's fluid, right?
Yes.
Karen?
I just want to reiterate that as far as what I think we're talking about, we're not changing the kindergarten staff or next year's first grade staff. So, we still have, so those two primary grades are still there. As far as what I think we're, might be discussing, K and one would still have four teachers. So, I hear you about the learning to read, about the kids coming into kindergarten, and they would, K and one would still have four teachers. Just want to make sure that was clear.
Can I, can I get back to the proposal? Because in fairness, you know, Mr. Bodry and Mr. DeSantis did, but a lot was founded to this, and they obviously talked with their staff and to be respectful of that work. I think it would be good for us to at least go through it line by line and maybe have some discussion on what we're comfortable with, and then maybe that will help us scally through this. Sure.
And I'm gonna propose that maybe we vote on each line item rather than tier, because seeing as it doesn't feel like they were listed in necessarily priorities or another manner, that there may be some that we'd be able to take from one tier and utilize right away, like that math interventionist that is going to impact our budget but not impact the day-to-day life.
Thank you. So, I think, just to start this off, we talked about offset from building utilization. You're gonna look at possibly increasing the form or charging more for utilization of the building, which can bring in more revenue. The amount you're gonna pull from the revolving fund is a amount that isn't really used. So, there shouldn't really be an impact. So, that seems like it's an easy thing to approve. Does anyone have any thoughts on line one? No, I think that's, you're right, it's an easy...
Okay. So, do we need to do this by motion? Or what is the protocol?
So, my understanding is that you can vote. You're calling these line items, these are not line items.
Understood, they're reductions.
They're proposed reductions. If you're going to reduce a line, you would refer to the particular line that things are from, and you would reduce by a particular amount.
So, can we maybe just relabel it and say proposed tier one? And then we'd have to find where the line item is from and do the reduction from there, correct?
Yes.
But I kind of want to have the whole picture before we vote on anything. But like, I mean, we can kind of add into a bucket of things we think, okay, here's a no-brainer for reductions.
Right. That's kind of, I mean, it doesn't have to be like the endpoint. I think we should at least get off the pages of the things that we're comfortable saying, like, yeah, that works.
Okay.
So, that would, that would put us at fifty-three that we're funding.
Okay.
So, the supply line data has to go, how that would impact?
So, what we did there is we were pulling from, uh, let's see. So, we're pulling from, you have a supply, teaching supply line that just has a whole lump sum that's in there. Reducing that by twelve percent now to forty-five thousand dollars.
So, you're not eliminating it, you're just lowering it.
Lowering it.
Okay.
And that's just kind of line item over pull. We have grade levels have like a certain amount of money that they could spend on whatever supplies for, supplies for more grade level.
Okay.
Copy paper, things like that.
Can the PTO help with things like that as well? Like, can they almost offset that? So, it's like not as big of a deal? Plus, I mean, I also kind of feel like at the beginning of the year, you get your list, bring in cleaning stuff, and bring in, just can't we just grow on? Like, an extra pack of crayons in there? Like, when I go into, like, the kids' classrooms, when I volunteer to read or something, and I see that, like, the kids are low on crayons, it's like, go to Walmart, and they're ninety-nine cents, and they just buy a few of them. It's not, like, parents like to help, media likes to help. I don't think that that's, I think that's an easy, an also easy check.
So, we also looked at the textbook line item, the offset there, and instructional software. The textbook line item was reduced by fifteen thousand dollars, and the instructional software was reduced by twenty-five thousand.
And what's the impact in terms of how that translates to the kids' education?
So, these are, Melissa, she has in here classroom libraries, ELA curriculum resources, science consumables. And then there's items in there. We have, it looks like a reduction in like accelerated theater, LaLanne programs that we have students that are on that. We would reduce those to, we have a couple of different instructional software pieces that we use.
So, it sounds like reading support and ELA would be impacted.
It looks like it's a mix across the board from like IXL, Sturts Science, Muzella.
Do we have other things that will compensate for that reduction?
I'm pretty confident Melissa's cuts there. I don't think she had anything in here that looked like it was over the top, but I feel like she's, Melissa's pretty resourceful, and I think she'll definitely be able to kind of work with our teachers and run it, and kind of come up with ideas.
Can I ask you a question about, so, we have STAR and DIBELS. Is that, STAR goes through what grades and DIBELS goes through what grades? Are they all K through six?
STAR, two to six. And then DIBELS is more early. So, we do that like...
Does DIBELS go through six, though?
K through three.
Okay, okay. I was gonna say, it would be nice if we could cut one of those. Like, I'm sure those cost us a decent amount of money if we had to cut something. Do we really need both?
Yeah, this year we do, just because of the new requirements around early literacy screening. But to Kane's point, then there were, Melissa Farrell went through with Kane and Brian, there's been a reduction in the instructional software around like Schoology, Learning Ally, Pebble Go. It's not absolutely cut, but it's across Union Thirty-One, it was reduced about forty-three thousand and eighty-four thousand in the proportionally in the textbook line. So, I think he listed what the impacts are.
Okay, like, does prodigy cost us money? Just out of curiosity? Or is that...
I don't have it on the list.
I don't have it on the list either, yeah.
Okay.
But I think for places that don't, can still meet instructional goals of teachers, we keep an eye on who's using what. And since it's, we believe in the ability of teachers to work with kids, and these are tools that we would start, I think the philosophy was to start with, what's the, were the effective tools that we can use and what can we do without? So, I think that was the rationale with these. So, I think there's enough in there.
No, those are, I mean, I agree with, I was just, that was just a question that popped into my head just because I remember when I was at parent-teacher conferences, I had a second grader. So, obviously, the STARs and DIBELS for the second grade. Correct, yeah, so it's, it was like a double...
You're right.
Do we really need both of these? But if it doesn't coincide together, I guess...
Yeah, so maybe just for Halifax, I can show you that initially, there was a forty-thousand-dollar textbook line, which was taken down twenty-five thousand. And then there was a thirty-nine-thousand-dollar to start instructional software, which is, which is taking down thirteen thousand. So, I'd say those are like triple-digit, you know, like twenty-five and thirty percent decreases to try to meet the seven-hundred thousand. So, I think those were gone through a pretty, in a detailed way by Brian, Kane, and Melissa.
Steve trying to supplement?
He's there in there as well.
He was, but I think he had seven thousand. He might have had tech hardware, Steve told.
And that's a, a different, that's different with the textbook software?
Yeah.
The rebrand offset was already factored into the budget.
So, the only thing that kind of sparked my ear a little is, and I don't know if it was last month or the month before, we talked about, we probably both, we talked about the need to increase our ELA staff, ELA resource for students, and we're cutting some instructional materials for ELA support.
Do you mean ESL?
Yeah, sorry, sorry, my bad. It's too late. That's his voice. Sorry, thank you.
They, I think we have, there's less than ten studios that are ESL in the building, but we're keeping that one because we're contracted services. But now, our contracted services, we'll go back to the same, but that's what we're planning to keep.
Okay.
Because we were drastically lower than what we've been, the lowest level. We're very close on that.
Wasn't that almost like a no-cost switch, though, right? For what we pay out? Six to the point five was pretty...
It was pretty similar. I think the contracted service might be like twenty, but then looking at a point five, and then like thirty-two or something like that. The other supply lines were looking at custodial, custodial supplies. We have supplies for grounds, and we have supplies for building, and just trimming all of those areas. And then also, we have a contracted services line item, which has like over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and that's where we would pay out the vendors that are fulfilling their, on our contract. And when we talk with our custodial, and he's, he was saying that we could cut into some of those areas. So, that's where, what we need, add all those on the road, and it's what gets us a hundred and one thousand. In everything, those are, those are all supplies.
Thank you. Do you have any other thoughts on that?
I think that's a decent cut. I think that's a good one.
Yep.
We can have a whole bullet and talk with PTO. We can get there and get creative with, with our teachers out.
Well, there's been a lot of events there, after, you know, they're starting to really do all the events and get all that back, so hopefully it's flowing.
I was part of, I was kind of a boys' scout troops. They used to host us supplies for Sundays, party, you. And kids party, extra supplies into the school. So, it just won't be, maybe we get that. Do we want to talk about transportation?
Sure. I mean, I think it's, I mean, if we know we can reduce two buses, but what I wanted to say earlier was if we knew, if people could commit to whether they're using the bus or not. And I only use COVID as an example because I remember committing to whether you were using the bus or not. I'm saying, I'm not saying, I'm somewhat uncomfortable with charging for the bus because I wouldn't want to make it difficult for any child to get to school. Yes?
We're required to have a seat on a bus for all students in grades K through six who live more than two miles from the school they are attending.
Okay, so it's a requirement, okay.
So...
Does that mean buses meet that requirement, do we now?
Yes.
So eight buses is pretty much the lowest we can go to, so even if we asked for commitments, it, we still have, that makes sense.
And so right now we have some buses that are carrying?
Eight.
Okay, and then the most full is like 70, is that what I heard you said?
It's, I think we have a number of 70, I don't know if it's actually 70, but those are the numbers that we count. But again, we need to have a seat for every child, say if there was an emergency or something like that. So that's where the number, the eight buses, the 71 on a bus is what we were working on.
So what would be the next steps in executing that? Would you have to set up a meeting for our students, talk about remapping, or like, does that change our contract?
Our contract is based on the bid that went out that First Student, so we posted a bid, First Student bid on the, the proposal. And in it, it says that we have the right to add or subtract buses.
Okay.
So that, that's the legal piece of it, then there's the technical piece. If we are going to go from 10 buses in Halifax to eight buses, then I want to have a conversation with First Student, you know, within a month or so. Because typically what bus companies do is take the previous year's routes and walk off of that, and I would think that the entire town would need to be rerouted.
Yeah, I agree.
Which with the software program they use would take about 20 minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
So we pay per bus, we don't pay a sub now, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I think that's a solid, especially if we have some with non-alive kids on it right now. I know my kid's bus has a lot of kids on it, but.
Then kind of more like what you were saying is that if you ask families to commit, you might even get a better idea of the actual number of families.
But if we have to provide a certain number, then we can't go below that number unless it is below eight buses. I mean, is the actual number, eight buses, to provide every student a seat? Is that, okay, so we can't go below eight anyway, like, I mean, I love that, but.
How, how close are we to having to add that nine bus? Or do we have some buffer?
Well, if we look at 71, I do believe there might actually be some buses that are breaking the line, they're either 74, 77 capacity. I think we do have some extended buses, but if we had eight buses, so, there's none here. If we add 71.
568 is the number we're looking for.
Yeah.
But that, but you also have to take into consideration that that's three students per seat. And six graders with backpacks may not necessarily fit six across a seat.
We've heard that too from parents when buses, like when there's a lot of kids, like, you know, you don't want to look at social media, but you hear it.
Well, the bus is a jungle, I mean, we all know.
Yeah.
You know.
The financial impact of being Silver Lake as well, where you're having the bus, typically you have a road at the high school, junior high, we take the other half down for Halifax, so you put that in the financial effect, Silver Lake would be a good investment.
Is that something that was considered in proposing the bus cut? If it's something that we can do even with Silver Lake?
I'm looking for the language in the contract right now, so if you could come back to me, that would be good.
Sure, does anyone else have comments on the buses? I mean, it seems like we have to say, yeah, I mean, if we can, I think that's a good solution because I have heard that a lot of buses are fairly empty, so. All right, and then, yes?
Right, I'm just thinking, I mean, there's three streets right here, Cranberry and Sonya, if you want four sets and a half, or the two mile pool, I think you can all go for the box.
Well, we can't though, because you have to provide it, even if they're, we have to provide it.
I bet parents knew that, like, it's costly, to ensure that we don't have to worry.
I know, but. No, I mean, I, I think that's a good idea, but again, I don't want to make it hard for anyone to get to school, given people's work schedules and siblings and I just really. But.
Just another question on the busing, just so it's clear. So earlier I believe the statement was that we were obligated to provide busing for outside of the minor ages or inside?
Outside.
Inside.
Outside. But we have to for kindergarten and first grader, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So the eight buses that are proposed, gives a seat to every student regardless if they're inside two miles or outside. So technically, you're only obligated to give a seat to those outside, what is the amount of students that are both inside and two mile radius that maybe that potentially could be savings of a bus, or two of them, so they have a $30,000 bus.
That would have to be a conversation I would have for a student. They have an interface between their routing program and our student information system. And it talks back and forth and they would have to produce a report for me of the students and the distance from the school, the houses.
So the idea, just so I can clarify what Jerece was saying, is potentially we can have a conversation with First Student to cut an additional bus if we can not provide transportation to students that are within two miles? Is that the idea?
I don't think I'd want to like not have transportation.
Yeah, I really am not comfortable with.
I want to clarify, I'm not saying.
I mean, I, and it would, and it would save like one bus, I guess, is 37,000 a year, which I mean, I, you know, thinking of the students, I don't want to make their education harder. You know, I don't want anyone stressed in this, in our town about getting their children to school. And I, I just, I feel like it's sort of small pickings for what we would get, and I'm afraid it would cause a lot of stress for a lot of families. And I mean. That's just how I feel, but I mean, it can.
I'd rather go through the rest of it, but we can back to that.
Yeah. So then support staff production, is that PARIS?
That would be two full-time parapersonals.
Okay. And the less classroom and supervision support for students concerns me as a impact.
Right now, 17, there are 17 paraprofessionals.
And my concern too being that with the struggle we've had covering classes with substitutes, I feel like, I'm, I'm, that concerns me. Because we do have an issue with substitutes that we talked about all year long. And how do you provide coverage to classrooms if, what would your solution be if we lost even more PARIS?
That's something that we would have to get creative, I know that, you know, when, in the contract, I know like specialist teacher is out and, you know, the classroom teacher would have to, you know, cover their own class, they would miss out on their specialist time. Would they receive a second for that? What else, Brian, like, we can provide classrooms, if that's me, I know some districts have had that. We would try and not utilize our, our, like specialist teachers or reading teachers or math people because that would take away from the service delivery that those students require, so.
So you're.
Just looking at the overall number of having 17 paraprofessionals in the building is, and if we have more, more staff, I'm just typical, it's tough because we have two sub separate programs here that can require additional staffing.
How many do they require?
Right now it's five, next year we'll have, I think it's six.
So of the 17 paraprofessionals right now, five of them are in that substantially separate program. So available to the school right now is basically 12 paraprofessionals.
Yes.
And then cutting down two more would be 10.
Yes.
And, and we've had trouble with class coverage.
Right.
Which is another reason why having a reduction in classes might make that easier per grade.
One thing the school committee approved this year was allowing Principal Bowdre to use the substitute teacher line to employ a building-based staff, which may provide some relief.
Outside assistance in the classroom, are you still going to be able to cover lunch and recess duty short two PARIS?
We're gonna have. We're gonna have to get a bigger one.
Well, is that something, if specialist load is reduced, would, would they be able to cover lunch and recess? Is that allowed, or would that be considered a class period?
I'd have to kind of double check in the contract to make sure that we're staying inside of that.
I mean, because if any.
Anything can happen.
Because if other, well, I mean, I'm sure, well, I don't know, I mean, you tell me like as far as like covering things, is it just the PARIS that cover recess and lunch, or is it also?
Well, the teachers are also on recess duty, so we were moving to the reduction of PARIS, we would probably need the teachers to also be on duty at lunchtime as well as recess.
Is that something that the specialists could possibly do if we were to have a reduction where the specialists could help at, like if you?
Potentially, but I'd have to look at the contract language and see what's, what's inside of that.
And teachers wouldn't have to help out every day for lunch or anything, right, because they rotate? It doesn't matter what I do for a day.
But we have PARIS right now, they go out every day for both lunch and recess.
And would that impact prep periods or anything if teachers aren't going out right now, but then will be if we cut PARIS?
Uh, I don't think it would because the only thing would be teachers get their prep time when their students go to special.
Specialist, okay. All right. Because that's where I feel like the trickle-down effect is concerning about cutting staff where if we have less classrooms, it's less of an issue. And, you know, I mean, just as far as thinking through this, but, so I feel like we kind of need to come up with, I mean, we can continue to go through this, but just thinking about, there's a trickle-down effect to no matter what decisions we make. And it's just hard, I don't, you know, I don't, well, I guess, and then going to reduce a full-time custodian to a halftime, is that something that would be, probably lose the custodian, is that, you know, or is that?
I think that would be true for anything.
Okay.
Like even our specialists, if they're reduced to 0.9s, then if they could go find.
A full-time position.
1.0 somewhere else.
Can I ask about it now, it's way too definite, so in your proposal, what do you mean by, why would you, what does it look like reducing specialists to 0.9?
Because the way we have our, well, our master's schedule set up, it's, it's an eight block schedule per day. And so if you reduce that, it would be like four and a half, like it would look like it's four and a half days. So they would teach, right now they teach 28 classrooms all for five day span. So if we reduce the classroom or a couple of classrooms, it, you know, open up more time in their schedule. So right now they go.
So, so those are really, so if there were classrooms cut, that's where the specialist would be impacted?
Right.
But okay, I wasn't sure if those were, I thought that's what made sense, but I wasn't clear on that. I think that problem might be able to be solved, and if the contract allows, then we could keep the specialist at 1.0 if I happen to also do some coverage or duty coverage, if that would be something.
Can we look at the contract?
But just something else to think about, that like we could kind of fix the specialist issue by giving those 1.0s by adding in other, you know, teaching time, just so to speak, even though I'm not going to teach math class now, but, you know, to not have those holes in our schedule if we fill the holes. And I think that would like have to be like a negotiated.
Is that, can I ask the union president, is that something in the contract, would that be allowed to?
I can't.
Oh, really? I'm sorry. If, if we had, can HTA members substitute in other classes or cover lunch and recess?
What do you do now?
Oh, spec.
Specialist, they have the same contract though, right? So.
I would just add to it, it's, you know, we're all considered the same teaching professional within the union, whether we teach specialist or special education, special teachers. So the contract reads that the duties of the apron, so whether you do, you know, recess duty, cafeteria duty, bus, AMD and bus duty, cafeteria breakfast duty. Teachers, whatever group you're in, are doing the same amount of duties, you know, in comparison to 1.0.
So you can do different duties depending on what's needed for this school?
Yeah, there's many, there's recess, I don't know if there's cafeteria for teachers right now, but, you know, we're in the hall in the morning, who do each breakfast, who teaches in the, or paraprofessionals doing duties. So it can be different locations, but in terms of substitution, I don't know, you know, substitute, how that works within our contract.
Are, is that happening with people that aren't in the classroom, like the classroom teachers are, like, is, I know, I know you're a reading specialist, do you substitute?
Last year, a lot, this year, see. If Brian Heiner has done a really good job to make my job a priority and not just homeless.
So it is a, like, it is something that happens though, so it's something that can happen according to your contract. So if, I mean, it's not ideal, I'm not saying I want, I'm just saying, but like something, you could have some of our specialists subbing in classes if we don't have coverage on certain days.
I would just like to add too, you know, specialist size helps with the considerations, or help is something we saw above the PE, 28 classrooms that I see, you know, of course, because our, you know, she'll teach courses in her full-time position now. So those, again, if class size, classroom, classroom remains the same, and, you know, specialist reduced 0.9, we do the half day, you know, those, those offerings will probably be that, the way the schedule like to help, of course, some of the other things that the specialist do.
Mrs. Erady?
Can I just clarify too, like, I think you said that, and like, this wouldn't be something you'd think of, but like, you said that if we cut a teacher at each grade level, it would be less duties, but the same kids still, the same kids still go in every day. So right now, there's four teachers at each grade level, so we each have duty like one day, and then on the fifth day, it's like, you know, like a specialist or a lawyer or somebody. And then, but like if you cut it down to three a grade, we have two days, do you know what I mean? There'll be an extra day where somebody's going to have to do another duty.
But if we cover, if we cut PARIS, the same thing happens?
Well, the teacher has to be on duty because of PARIS.
If we cut the PARIS, teachers won't be more responsible for duties like that?
Well, I mean, like, if my PARIS, I would, I still go out with my kids and my college faculty to put in for my BAP.
I know, I know they don't do subs for PARIS, I'm saying, if we were to cut two PARIS, people's duties would change. Well, if your PARIS not there to.
Well, for instance, like in Paris, we have three PARIS, so if one PARIS, it could still be a teacher and two PARIS out there, do you know what I mean? Like, not that I'm not losing, you know what I mean? I'm just saying, it's the same, if a, if a teacher and two PARIS are at each recess duty, it would still be a teacher and a PARIS, they probably would have put another teacher, you know what I mean?
Okay.
I think that, what they're saying, I think that there always has to be a teacher. I don't think it's ever just PARIS covering, there's always a teacher, and then I think the PARIS are extra help, so it would still be, the teachers would have to be there, but they might not have the extra help.
Okay, so it's not that, okay, thank you.
I think, right, just one of us always has to be, like, there are spaces trying to do that, and it's usually at least two people up there.
So while we're on the support staff production of two, in tier one of the guts, tier two also has support staff production of two. I'm assuming those are also PARIS? Okay, and then, so ultimately, if we do everything, honestly, you're looking at kind of four PARIS.
Which would bring us to eight?
Eight for the.
Eight for the whole school?
It would be seven. It would be seven.
Seven.
Seven, one-
So each grade would have a para.
And then look at six, I think, six for the subset of rooms.
Do we want to like move on to another line before we-
Yeah.
I think we should.
Okay. Can I ask about the custodial staff? I'm assuming that the facilities, your head custodian was incorporated in coming after this?
I talked to him, yes.
And he was comfortable with that?
I don't think anyone is comfortable with it.
Yes, I apologize, you're right, you're right. No one, no one in this room is comfortable with that, but, but he was, he understood.
You know, it's not ideal, and like I said, it's a little on the size, you probably just need more.
I think we have someone.
Sorry, I'm not a big speaker, I don't teach classroom, like, I do work, I get things done.
We appreciate all that you do.
You have to run a few packs, we only have four custodians. They cut one to halfway, it's like losing one, one is going to work hot night. And then what's going to happen is they're going to do a snowball, and they may come up, the other guys are going to say, I'm not going to, maybe I'm not going to. But some of the impacts that you're going to have, we're going to know we have a sick home. I'm always there, if you've got a sick home, I'm here. We'll have to have, someone from the town come in, open the school up. If someone's sick, we'll have to reach out, can't, we'll say, oh, cocaine or whatever, have the cocaine, can't even call a spot. And we'll have to get the ball rolling. Other big impacts is snow, always here to make sure the teachers get in the building safe. Ice melt, snow melt, air pickup. You're going to have to go three shifts, so homeschool is going to have to be covered in three shifts. So one custodian will probably have to come in at eight or nine in the morning. The next one, two in the afternoon, and then the other one, maybe one in the afternoon and one at three. So you may have a talent person coming to open up the school. And you still have the whole school to clean, 900,000 square feet. You might be losing hot night family here, but you still got to clean every club, you got to clean laundry, you got to clean the gym. Twenty bathrooms to clean every night, so there is a big impact. And we always try to make sure that we're talking about budget, we work better in school, we have to make sure everything is done on time. We don't, you know, we try to make sure everything is done clean, you got an expectation. Every day I come in, I have an expectation, expectation of office duty. Teachers and staff always have an expectation that smells and pests, every time they're coming in, they want to stay the same way, same way, same time.
No, it always looks, I mean, there's, there's absolutely no question of the value every single person in this building adds.
And that's fine, unfortunately, the rest of them are going to lose, boogie me, and that's, you know, I'm a survivor. But who's got a schedule? Who's got a law contract? You know, it's, these guys are going to have to pick that up. You got one guy in the building during the day, he's going to be in the cafeteria, can't get up and just sit up on the rug. Some things are just going to, services are going to be overlooked. I just want you to make sure you think about that. Teachers will have to make, you're the wrong one, but we won't be able to get that every day. I just have the teachers, they're always trying, oh, I'll take that, don't worry about that. If you don't ask me to teach, I don't ask you to teach. Just, just keep that in consideration.
Thank you. Um, so the next one is reduce assistant principal to 204 days, so that would mean that you would come in less in the summer? Mr. DeSantis?
Yeah, probably have four spaghetti on the ground.
I, no.
I feel bad because we just gave you the full time.
How do you guys feel about that one?
I don't love it, obviously.
I mean, honestly, it's $9,000, which is not a lot when we're trying to find $700,000. But I respect that, you know, from an administrative perspective, you're trying to all kind of look at what can be contributed as a goal, so I don't love either.
I put it out there because, I mean, like, we said we tried to even off the cuts as much as possible, and I agree with that. We have to part heads up.
I do appreciate that, I mean, it's, it's a hard, you know, because we are trying to be fair and how, if it's even possible. And appreciate that, but, you know. What makes less of a difference to our budget per se makes a bigger difference to your life, like as a human, you know, like, and, you know. I mean, that's where it's really hard in trying to think in terms of where can we make cuts that make less impact but have a bigger budgetary impact? That's kind of where I'm at in thinking, you know, that's really where I'm coming from mostly. I don't, I don't know if we want to automatically add that to the list or if we're leaving people for last, or I just, and I don't know, Mr. Bowdre, are you able to take any cuts or as principal, are you not allowed to or?
I think so, but I'll-
I know it's not possible, you have to be here full, I mean, I don't know, I'm just asking, because, I mean, I feel like everything's on the table, we're trying to-
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's kind of where we're at, that's where cutting things across the board, that's something that, you know, I want to take a look at my contract. Reducing that as well. So being, I think that's where Brian and I were talking, is looking at every possible area, so we don't have to make cuts like to classroom teachers.
Okay.
With Brian not working, then that is kind of odd in the building, and that's, that's on me to pick up the slack for the days that he's on here.
So that's going back to-
Someone has to pick up this behind you.
No, I know, I understand, someone needs to teach the kids, someone needs to, I mean, it's, I don't know, what do you, do you guys have any comments or thoughts?
I feel like, um, I mean, there has to be an administrator in the building, so I, I don't really, again, I don't have a part feeling one way or the other on this. And again, it's not, it's $10,000. So I'd rather just provide a secret debt through some of the rest of it than come back to what we're comfortable with. I know, like, this is a really, like, excruciatingly long process, but I feel like it's worth it times.
Can I ask, when, when would the window be that you're out in the teens?
It would be similar to the previous contract where we have this for you. And then one in July, and then probably two, you know, it's a few months.
Yes.
Just a reminder, we also have that coverage for teens, vacation times, all of which meant that it's an awful issue.
Right.
That we weren't able to give the principal the time off. And that was an whole issue that we had, through, didn't have coverage. So I'm not saying this isn't a good idea, it's just something to keep into consideration.
Any balls to keep in the air at the same time? Alright, so 2.4 from HTA?
How would be our behaviors instrument and reading specialist?
So as far as the instrument goes, if we were to have less classrooms and Mrs. Lassard had more availability, could she pick up the instruments or would that? Because I, yeah, Mrs. Lassard, because I know you've taught instrument, I don't know, I'm just wondering, is that a possibility? I know you're-
I'm sorry, yeah. Yes, I am very qualified to do that, if you need me. Whether there'd be enough time, people to what she does now, I don't know. She said yes.
Okay, thank you.
It is hard to hear, sorry.
Yes, Gordon?
So I think this is kind of where we're at, at the end of the discussion that you're having. And I want to, I want to try to distill a couple of things. From the standpoint of how we get here, our understanding is we got here because state funding did not heat pace with what expenses were. Nothing anybody here agreed on that, so not a lot of point spent on time. The other aspect was the special education cost absolutely skyrocketed, particularly in our district. They went up across the state, it's a problem across the state, they went up particularly in our district. Some of that is the state allowing transportation costs to go up, and things like that. But unless I had misunderstood these related meetings, a lot of the issue has been a growth in overall referrals. And that is students needing extra services, average replacements, other things like that. So I think what you're talking about here is you have to meet the service needs of people with special needs and in need of special education, constitutionally. So you have to meet those needs. I think what you're talking about here in this line item are the people that are on the front line of which direction kids wind up tipping. And we have one model on the table that is gambling, that we will mitigate or not create more challenges for special education by keeping classroom sizes essentially what they are right now and losing the support staff that helps mitigate those issues versus the other model, which says we will gamble, so to speak, on classroom sizes that are research-backed and stay with support services that help to deal with special education in mitigation of what becomes special.
Because most of these support staff work with children before they're on IEDs, correct? Like, they're the ones that help, they're helping our kids that are sort of, are a little bit behind but haven't qualified for services yet, is that correct?
Parent professionals and handlers.
I think you meant these two positions.
Yeah, these two positions, sorry. Yeah, no, I meant, sorry, I meant, yeah. The behavior, well, behaviorist is for behavior issues and-
Reading specialists.
Reading specialists, but the reading specialists work with students that aren't on IEDs yet, correct? Or, so they're there to help bully, you know, buoy the kids along? It's a preventative measure?
Yes. So that's, that's what the gamble is. And the whole thing that got you here and got us here, so to speak, not you, but us as a district, in particular, is special education. So I don't know what's correct, I'm, I'm a professional educator at a university level, I'm not a professional educator at this level. So I don't know what is correct, but the correct model, to me, is going to be that which is going to do the best possible job of mitigating special education challenges while also successfully servicing, you know, our standard classes. That's a little of the debate is.
I mean, I'm not comfortable with eliminating behaviorist or reading specialist. And I don't know to what degree we can figure out a way to keep instrumental instruction as part of the school with a fulminating composition, but this is a line I'm probably the least comfortable with.
I would agree. I mean, it's been on, on the back of my mind, the number of students that need type of one services, reading support, math support. We even have proposed to us by administration, a heroes academy, that would supplement this even further. And so I worry if we pull this support from our students, who obviously need it, what it could look like for them and us as a district.
What is the, so it's 2.4 for all three of those, what are they separated, like what is the behaviorist?
Behaviorist and the reading specialist are one.
One.
Do we have a number for how many students access, like a number of students that access behaviorists in general, like on a regular basis? And the number of students that access the reading specialist?
I can tell them off here, but, uh-
Does anyone in the audience know? Does anyone in this audience know how many students access the reading specialist and behaviorist?
All right, how many people are on your case load? Are you eating?
I'm thinking.
That's a good interview.
I have 15 kindergartners, five first graders, eight, 10 second and third, and four, and I push into a bunch of us.
What did you say the behaviorist is?
For grade, speaking for grade three, you don't have any students seeing behaviorists. We have for the past five grades, five or four of their operations.
Is there a way to drop the behaviorists down to like a point five instead of a one? Save there, but still have them in the building?
I think you're not comfortable with that, sorry. I think you have a lot of kids coming through the school that really need behaviorists.
But they're not going to see them?
I would honestly ask each grade level to see how many students actually do behaviorists on a weekly basis.
Okay.
Maybe you should surprise probably here, me and my kids that do actually see.
Do act, okay.
So I know for grade three, there's, we don't have anyone.
Kindergarten? I guess everyone can think of it while they're-
So we have sixth grader.
What? Sixth? Okay. First grade?
Zero, one.
One. Second grade?
Two.
Two. We already heard from third grade. Fourth grade?
Zero.
Zero. Fifth grade?
Two.
Two. Sixth grade?
I don't know if we need kids that see or, like, is required, we have kids that put out or two.
And then what about the DLC issue, or I have to-
Nothing, nothing in that kindergarten or second, we don't get hurt at all for us. But the older DLC classes. But it's still, back to a priority, Mr. Bowdre, and Mr. DeSantis, we cannot replace the tier one instruction. It cannot be replaced, and I think how we decided to reserve it also back.
Alright, um, and then, so the support staff, with two more pares that we already talked about, and then the main office, 2.8 for, I assume, I don't, I mean, one of the physicians in there?
We have, we have two main office people, so if we reduce one, we're planning.
Just one? One of them?
One is a year-round position, and one is a parent position, that's-
Is that included in the total number of pares?
I don't think that it is, I think it's a separate standalone.
Okay.
Did we have the secretarial, I think it would be differently, the secretarial of the classrooms, I think it was different.
Oh, really? Okay.
It's a hundred percent contract.
So they're in a different light?
Yes.
Yeah. They're different light items, okay.
Can I go back to the line before that, the behaviorist? So if we cut the behaviorist, is there any behaviorist that is developing?
So, if we cut the behaviorists, is there any behaviorists that are developing any visibility? The responsibility of those students that are seeing how much?
Most likely it would be members of our process. It would be myself, Brian, our adjustment counselor, our mental psychologists.
And same with the reading specialists, if we cut that?
Right now, we have two full-time reading teachers. So, doubt.
Cut to one.
Cut to one. And then, most likely, that would impact classroom teachers. They would need to, you know, pick up that extra slack.
School psychologist actively have a caseload or is he just doing a testing?
He has a little bit of both, but he's also the team chair. So, he chairs all of our special education behaviors.
So, he just have a ton of access for meeting kids?
No, he doesn't have a huge caseload like that.
I think the question is, does he have the capacity to take on what the caseload of the behaviorists does currently have? That position is.
Does the school psychologist alone, can he pick up the behaviorists? No. I think it would be collectively before or less, so that would be almost a good idea.
Do we want to talk about any of the tier two cuts before we move on to three?
Well, considering they're all people.
Yep.
Those are the harder ones. And, I mean, the trickle-down effect, again, it's, we're all trying to see into the future by deciding what cuts will have the least amount of impact. And honestly, none of us know exactly. But my concern is, is the struggles we have right now with these support services. And I feel like because our teachers have shown their ability to teach with bigger class sizes, because we don't have control over how many students are in each grade level. You know, a kindergarten class comes in, and if that class has to have 27 kids, you guys make it work because you're phenomenal. But, so, I mean, I feel like going with knowns is better than going with unknowns. To me, we haven't gone without all of these support staff and reading specialists. And, I mean, some of them are new, but we have had certain classes be larger than we would like. Because if 90 kindergartners sign up, we take 90 kindergartners with four teachers. We don't do anything about it. So, I mean, just in going through this, I feel like here's a place where we can reduce with not as much impact because we make it work anyway.
I feel like a lot of people moved into the town of Palabaxco for small class sizes.
I agree.
That's why I did.
What are Kingston's average class sizes?
Palabax over Bridgewater. I don't want 30 kids in a class.
So, we're not at 30.
But some are going to be at 27.
But we wouldn't be cutting all of them. Yeah, there's none.
The highest class size, if we were to cut, and I don't even know how many teachers I'm talking about yet, but Ms. Lauda said that if we cut everybody down to three, which I don't think that we're considering, that that would be the 27 and 30 that I don't think any of us would do, would agree to cut every. We wouldn't need to cut every single teacher from every grade. This is just showing the numbers. But taking out the two large numbers, the highest class size would be 23, which is what the current class size is right now of one grade. And then another grade is 22 right now, and another grade is 21. We're not.
But those aren't the ideal classrooms. It's like, you don't want that. It's not ideal for people. Like, they don't like.
You're voting 17 to 23, yes.
I think it's 17. 17, 20.
And they're all 23.
Yeah, but like, nobody wants 23, just like Mrs. Reddick said. She doesn't want 24 kids in kindergarten, it's just we had it.
But if we have 90 kids, she's going to have 20.
Right, I get it. But like, I don't see us having a smaller enrollment. I would say this forever almost as a joke. COVID babies are coming. Well, every, like, I just, just my neighborhood alone.
Just, you have the teachers in the room telling you that they would rather have less support staff than have teachers teaching kids. You increase the classrooms of those grades, you're going to end up having more need of support staff. You're going to need more support staff if you break those class sizes up. Because they're at 17 for those grades, and they're not setting it up. The numbers that were mentioned weren't as high as I'm expecting them to be for the other grades. If now there's 23 kids and you're trying to do reading groups with those 23 kids, you're going to want to send some of those kids out of the room. So, you're going to need more support specialists. I understand it's a very hard choice to make. I think you have the principals and administration that went through all these iterations that you guys tried to squeeze into tonight's meeting. They came up with a recommendation. I think they got input from staff. And I think it would be wise to listen.
I know, but.
I think we are listening.
We are listening.
I think you're not. You've got this out of the table, so I appreciate the words, but this is challenging. We're trying to listen to everybody. So, I would like to ask you, in your comments at the beginning of the meeting, you suggested that we only cut 500,000. So, this proposal is 704,000. So, we also have our town manager and from our board of selection. And there's a finance committee meeting next week.
On Wednesday.
On Wednesday, excuse me.
No, it's okay.
So, I think that, you know, part of going through this exercise, as simple as it is, is trying to figure out, where's that 500,000? Is there even an appetite in the town to contribute the other 204,000?
I've already asked.
Yeah.
And they've asked us to cut 680,000.
Yeah, so, you know, there's no good answer.
Respectfully, I think if you want to fight for what you believe the students need in the building.
A hundred percent.
It's the finance committee's responsibility to fight what they think is a responsible budget. It's a break for the budgets accounted and whether the people discuss it. But I think if you cut to the 700,000, we don't have a discussion accounted either.
I agree with you. I think we need to be creative. I think that this is an exhausting process.
And we're up against a huge timeline. We've, you know, like, we have to pass this tonight, and we're being asked to make impossible decisions.
I would respectfully say that you have to pass the budget tonight. It doesn't have to be a final budget. The finance committee did not recommend your number. We've done it before when I was in the finance committee, didn't recommend Subway's number. Didn't recommend the elementary school's number. It happens. Reductions will happen on the down meeting or if the numbers aren't set. And I think that it's your responsibility to fight for the students and what the students need. It's the town's responsibility to find the funds for that. Again, I would argue that planning for what is happening here should have been placed in the hall. Everybody should have been aware. Operationally, the shift at Subway would cost $300,000 in jay-aging. And that should be taken into account for budget. Asking schools to have a budget of $475,000 with the increase at Subway, knowing the percentage increase, I don't think is realistic. And asking the elementary school to take a burden of those cuts to a regular day student is a massive impact. And if my daughter wasn't going into sixth grade right now, I would pull her and put her into a charter school. And I would ask all the other kids that my parents friends with at this level. Because those dollars would be falling because of regular day student, it's a general education student. And it would make this committee's job a lot harder. And I understand that because those dollars would come up. But right now, you're asking, because of these special means and increases, you're asking the regular day budget to be cut. I think you need to stand up and say, the budget's here for a reason. You need to support the general education students. And this is what we have around.
I'd like to echo before you saying. After listening to everything and hearing the decisions that were made and why they're being made, I would like to make a motion to approve the tier one and tier two proposed cuts. Is it ideal? No.
I think the motion to approve the tier one cuts.
Yeah, I would second that.
We ended the last meeting.
Well, we have, I know. But, I mean, I would second tier one. I think tier two needs maybe some tweaking. Hopeful tweaking.
Can I make an amendment to my motion then? I'd like to make a motion to approve the tier one proposed cuts and the math interventionist re-allocation of funds from tier three. I have.
So, it was 26,000?
How much is the math improvement?
26,000.
That brings us to 339.
That's a good start.
We, well.
Is there any part of tier two that anyone else would entertain to add to that?
As much as I hate it and I thank him for sacrificing his family, I think Mr. DeSantis is, it's hard to say, I mean, but I think that we should add that to it. If he's willing to do it and take one for the team, so to speak, no one likes it.
I think before we add that one, I think we add the support staff reduction and the main office reduction and instrumental.
I would agree with instrumental and main office. I think I would need more information about the behaviorists and support staff.
I think if we can.
Yeah, maybe just go back to just clear tier one.
Let's just, can we just?
Go to tier one.
Can we vote on tier one and then we're done with tier one?
Without the math interventionist?
Yeah, let's just do tier one right now.
Just clean tier one. Yes, I make a motion or I make a motion to support it.
So, I'll second the motion to approve tier one.
Okay, we'll take a vote. Katie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jessica? And I'm a yes.
Lori, you was the first one to motion. I made the motion, thank you. And I just seconded it.
And then Katie ended up seconding it too. So, whoever you want to second it, right? You could listen.
Well, she did first, so okay.
Okay. I feel like we have to at least, I mean, I don't, I feel like we have to get to maybe 500,000 because they asked for 680.
Can we divide out how much, like, how much is the instrumental? How much is reading? How much is behaviorist? Right now, it's under 168 as the total.
You can, you can just vote a number to reduce the budget by.
I'd like to know what we're actually thinking. I know ultimately the school has line up authority, I get that, but I would like to hear, like, the dollar values.
I think our taxpayers would like to know the impact on their kids' education.
Just to make sure I understand your question, you're looking to say what is each position? We are not in a position, right now, in order, whenever we do a reduction force, we're bound by contractual procedures. So, we would look at seniority risk based on people's licensures. And once we eliminate the positions, we would then examine which people are who basically move it around. So, for me to tell you with precision without actually looking at that list.
I think we're just asking about.
No, just the instrumental.
That are listed here.
Yeah, is that, we cut down the. Break down which positions, is that okay? I guess my, what I would like to put out there is that if you eliminate a position.
It doesn't necessarily mean you're eliminating that person. You're eliminating the position, and then they have to go through the union. No, I think it is. I think it is for all of the, all positions.
So, if we could give you the placeholder that we use.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah, a placeholder. Because it's not necessarily, yeah.
Faculty, I believe, is 65,000. And the placeholder for parent professional support would be 25,000.
What does instrumental fall under?
That's a teaching position.
Is that .4?
But we're only doing 4.4 because we share that with.
I'd be 26,000.
So, we suggested that the system from the building office production. The instrumental 20K, all right? Sorry, 20,000.
That would be an additional 133,000.
Basically, if we do all of. Well. It's 365 with just instrumental right now. This plus we do, because we are most likely going to do this intervention math one. So, that is.
And the math one's already included, isn't it?
We haven't done that one yet. We haven't voted on that yet.
Then that's 26.
That's 26. So, we're at 313 plus 26 plus 26.
I thought we were at 339.
365. There's 339 with the math.
Okay.
The top tier and then the math one, but to add in just the instrumental is 26, so it's 365. Is that something we can do, is bring a behaviorist down to .5?
Bring what?
Behaviorist, promote one to a .5?
Well, yeah, you can do anything. Yeah.
So, one, your proposals that we try to get into thought.
Correct. At least.
So, based on what I've just kind of calculated, taking all the tier one, the math interventionist.
And instrumental.
Instrumental and the main office staff. Sorry, was it not interventionist? That is.
371.
I have 3.
I have 381.
That could be maybe a sticker.
So, it's still 125. That's not really losing half the jobs, right? That's just.
No, just reallocated.
We also have already, if we do this, we will probably lose a custodian. As was testified. Could you just tell me what the positions are that you have in the second number?
Yep, so it was the re-allocation of the math interventionist going from full-time to .6. And then .1 would be made up for title one. So, they're still kept as a full-time employee. And then, the instrumental teacher at 26. And the office support staff at 6. So, I got 381.
It's all going to be kind of.
Can you give me the numbers that gave you the 381 more?
Yeah, so 313 for tier one.
Okay.
26, oh, sorry, I think I double did it there. Oh, I did. 26 for the math interventionist.
26 for instrumental.
So it is 71.
But then there's the main office.
And office at 6.
We can vote on those cuts as well and then hash out the final bit. What do you think, or wait?
Do we want to try to talk for the other bit and just leave one final?
Yeah, let's just do that.
So when looking at this, we still have two paraprofessionals.
And tier two? On tier two?
In tier two, that we got to make a decision about. And we also have in tier three, um, the point, minus five or five specialist going from one to .9 and a classroom teacher. I think we've heard pretty loudly from the audience that the classroom teacher is on, the route that folks wanted up. So I think it's just a matter of, do we think? You know, looking at the specialist teachers, um, it seems like a equitable reduction, however, I don't know if reducing those hours is going to cause us to lose staff anyway, so that's my question.
No, that's fine.
Am I, like, I'm just, I'd be interested in what would be the cost?
Well, what does that actually save us?
The .9, reducing specialist to .9?
Yeah, because that's like a big jungle.
Yeah, because it's got a full time teacher.
Teacher in there too, so what does going down to .9 actually save us on those five teachers?
65,000 maybe to go up as a estimate, as a teacher.
So it's a choice between the support staff at 58 or the specialist at 26 and the behaviorist or the reading specialist?
Well, I have a question actually. Would, would you folks consider not taking a cost of living raise this year? To cross the board?
Not taking a water-
Cost of living? Like, so that's something we could take off the top of the budget?
I counter with what, what are you willing to cut? We go to the town to say, and say-
Well, we're, I'm, the town wants us to cut 680,000 and I'm trying to come up to five and ask them to please close that gap. I mean, I'm, so that's my question, if maybe everyone in the building, everyone, collectively doesn't take that cost of living raise, then everybody's feeling it. I mean, I'm, I'm just throwing things out there because I'm trying to, because it's hard to make decisions about full jobs, you know? No, but we can do, we can do, uh, like a memorandum of agreement in M O A. I don't know if that's something you want to talk about or-
So Lauren, I, this is how I feel and I don't want, you know, I, I think it, we've gone through, I don't even know time is at this point, two and a half hours on this. Um, I don't know that we're going to get to 500, quite frankly. I think, um, I think that there's a lot of, I don't think we're all in agreement on things. I, I, the number uncomfortable is is where we're at, 380. I think we go to the town with that and see what they say.
Well, the town's here.
Tell you that is not something that we can sort, bring this up to the town's people. Uh, all I do is bring a balanced budget. We cannot bring an unbalanced budget for a town meeting. We have to have a balanced budget, uh, but it's up to the town. At this point, we can't work over it in order to save just so 25. Or, yeah, therefore, some wants to, that's sort of the balance and the budget has to be approved by the town committee. But, you know, this goes to finance committee, what their recommendation is, this is what they've recommended, uh, to bring this forward. This is in line with all of our departments. Police and fire, about two percent increases for the year. And we're seeing other increases as a result of elementary school budget, our home insurance. And then as our higher degree, if we are eliminating positions, the town does absorb those unemployment costs. So what presented here, we're looking at additional $100,000 unemployment cost.
And if we come in without, you know, I mean, our costs went up considerably. You know, so that's where it's hard because the town still has its operating budget with all the other services it provides. And, I mean, so I, I don't know, I mean, it's, we can vote a budget, but I don't know what will hap- I mean, none of us can predict the future, we don't know. Maybe everyone will say, absolutely will. But I'm bringing what the finance committee asked us for. And coming in that much lower, I don't know, but because there's, you know, there's only so many resources. I mean, in our town, we have one new house this year, you know, built. Like, we have no additional revenues as a town.
Maybe, maybe bus fees or kindergarten tuition. I know that, again, I go back to myself, I paid kindergarten tuition for my own kids and I also paid a bus fee. Doesn't have to be, maybe it could be like a one year thing, try it out. But it's a potential area for, for, for our situation.
I'd rather pay a bus fee than lose Brian in the summer.
I'd pay two bus fees for that.
We got him, Brian, trying.
I still feel like we really have to be careful with kids getting to school.
But so many other towns, like, Hemerock, I think charges like $350 to ride the bus and there's like a sibling discount of like $50. I don't think it's, I mean, I don't like, I buy kids ride the bus, do I want to, do I want to pay $350 for my kid to ride the bus? Zero percent chance that that's what I want to do, but if it's going to save jobs for teachers and paras and Brian and-
Can we do that? I thought we could do that because of regional district. I thought we, I thought we could do that because we're regional. That was an option for us.
I scheduled a meeting with the regional director for first student for tomorrow. I have a phone call with her at 2:30. And I also need to talk to Attorney Dupere.
Thank you, I just, I feel like we discussed it before and it's all been a lot to, it's not an option for us.
Right.
Just one, because I agree, it would be good. And to your concerns, I think, you know, students are free to do slush, like, you know, we-
Oh, okay, I didn't, okay.
I assume we, or we can make it that way, you know, so I think that we could, you know, still be empathic with that. But I just thought that that wasn't an option.
Yeah, well, because Hemerock, you know, if you're, if Hemerock TJ, they, they pay to ride the bus. So then it's also going to narrow down, like, our bus problem too with who's actually going to ride the bus and then we know. Then we know how many kids are on the bus.
If you charge them, do you still have to provide this, like?
Yeah, that's what I understand to do. Still have to provide to see if my kid, but not that one's actually going to-
I mean, I suppose, like, we could do what Silver Lake did and vote a number and still work on trying to figure some things out. I, I mean, I don't think we're going to have all the answers tonight. I mean, unless someone thinks that, like, I mean, there's things that are going to require research and-
Yeah, I agree with that, that's definitely, I have two questions, so.
And I know, like, maybe we're not as comfortable, but we do have to bring a number to the town. And the thing is, if we don't vote a number and we can't pass a budget, then that gets us closer to the state taking over our school and we have no state then. So we have to work with something, like, we have to keep moving forward. And, you know, they'll, they'll decide what our budget is and they'll decide what, you know, and, and like, come take over the school and then we'll have nothing. So we have to bring something to the town. I, I feel personally that we should at least try to cut 500,000 because they asked us to do 680 and say, you know, can, can we bring this to the floor and see, let the town's people decide.
I would bet number two.
Okay. What do you guys think?
So would we really actually just say that we're voting to reduce the budget by an additional 187? Because we already did the 313s?
Yeah.
Keep that, we did, we did-
Yeah, we, we definitely, yeah, we, yeah.
We picked up one of that, okay.
You know, we rolled it apart, that would be very good.
Unless you want to vote those ones too, we could just come-
Comfortable voting those.
Okay, we are being asked to, to be figured out. So we also talked about, sorry, my mouse messed up. So the main office production, um, the assistant principal reduction, the-
Instrumental.
Instrumental.
And a math. That brings us to what we're adding.
Oh, make a motion to, to also only 9,000 for the assistant principal, the main office production of $6,000. The, um, math interventionist-
26.
Of 26,000. Is that it?
Oh.
And then instrumental 26,000.
Do we get instrumental San Francisco? I'll second that, yes, we did, okay. Instrumental San Francisco.
All right, votes?
I know.
Um, Katie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Yes.
I guess, and I'm a yes. And now we need to vote for the additional.
So what's up now? 320, right?
320.
So we are voting the entire budget number?
To reduce the entire budget number by an additional 120,000.
So I'll make that motion to reduce the school budget by 120,000.
Okay, second. All right, Katie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. All right.
Yes.
We need to vote the exact number.
Oh, the exact number, what would the exact number be? Okay, thank you.
I came up with 500.
No, no, the exact number we're voting to in the, to for the budget.
What do you mean?
Like, we have to take what the total budget number is now minus the 500.
Awesome.
And I have 6,965,138.43. That's 6,965,138.43.
65, 156.
Say it, would you say it one more time, 9,000? All right. You vote the total budget.
I'll make a motion to vote the total budget of 6,965,138.43.
Captain?
All right, Katie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Yes, Karen.
I don't think, I don't think.
Yes, and myself is a yes.
Is there anything else for you to do?
Oh, yes, Gordon?
As the most necessary, 21, 25, all facts, all I understand.
What did you say?
Might include the rest of the motion.
Oh, for the-
Total 24.
24, 25, okay, we'll do it over. You want me to? Okay. I will make a motion for the total budget for Halifax Elementary School for fiscal year 24, 25 to be $6,965,138.43. Second. Okay, Katie?
Yes.
Lori? Karen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Yeah?
Can you clarify what positions you just typed just within here?
That's okay.
Thank you.
Tier one?
We know tier one.
We know.
Tier two.
And then we vote tier two. And tier two, yeah.
Tier, tier two, um, we did a main office reduction to .8. We reduced assistant principal to 204 days and the instrumental.
And the inter, math interventionist from tier three, we're just reallocating cuts to keep her as a full timer.
Okay.
Is that all that was on tier two?
No.
No.
No, there was support staff on tier two and behaviorist and reading specialist as well.
What was the total number that you were? The total number we reduced by was 380. But we also made a motion to eliminate $500 or 500,000 from the budget to reduce it by 500,000.
So we still have 120,000.
And we have to figure out where that's coming from, but we have not figured it out tonight.
Okay, um, now we have the sign, signing of warrants?
So I brought with me tonight nine warrants totaling 424,699.25 to be signed and then delivered to the town hall in the morning. There were no single signature warrants in between when I saw you last and- And I apologize, I also have a food service warrant, I just don't know if you signed them or not.
I don't know, do we?
We voted and approved them in the last meeting.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Can I ask one of the other people in our audience to ask if we were in a deficit for this?
Oh, yeah, that's correct, we are not in a deficit for this.
I just wanted to make that clear.
We aren't in a deficit.
You're not.
We are not.
Thank you.
Because we froze the budget.
Do you need also make a sound as well?
All right, um, school committee? School, school committee corresponds and reports, I don't have any. Future agenda items, is there anything you would like to put on the agenda for next?
If I could just ask that we keep the discussion about the water situation, um, as constant on our agenda until it's resolved?
Sure.
That would give me some peace of mind, but we have it on the forefront of our mind.
Sure. Okay, anyone else? Anything? Okay. All right, subcommittees, policies? Oh.
Everybody did.
Jill? Did, policy didn't meet, right? Jessica, no, I'm sorry, you know, it's okay. Negotiations, um, we're going to talk about an executive session. Pilgrimage collaborative, Karen?
We had a draft in the, what's that? 78, Thursday, the sixth, Thursday?
Okay. Um, you can interact?
Uh, the town posted Easter egg hunt on the 23rd of March and it was well attended.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. PTO, Karen?
I was at, um, my work, very complex today. But, but I spoke with the president and she said that they approved the requested expenses to see your field trips and buses for all students. And they have plans for Bus Driver Appreciation Day later this month and Teacher Appreciation Day.
Great. Okay, capital budget, I don't believe met. Did admin review meet, please?
Yeah.
DEID subcommittee?
So we talked briefly, um, continuing to look at policies as well. Um, I did have a question. Sorry. Um, so at the last meeting that we had, um, Mr. My, um, Mr. March, one of the questions that we had asked was if you could give us the, um, description of, in writing of what we do, we didn't know, we hadn't seen that cover, so.
It's in the folders.
Okay. Oh, geez. So we need to take some time to- So we need to take some time to go through that.
Sure.
Tonight, or do you mean another time?
No, yeah. Yeah, we're in the address.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, Union 31 did meet on the share costs agreement and... That's pretty much it, right? Um, and, all right. Principal report?
Let's see, so school council met last week to continue with the handbook revisions. We still need some more time with the handbook. We apologize for not being able to finish it all, but we're trying to get that as possible. And then, did, is water now up?
I thought water was added, but, um, if you could update please, yeah.
Yeah, it's just, I just wanted to give an update in terms of the, they put water filters on the bubblers and water filters in the kitchen. And then they changed out the, uh, the kitchen presser, the basin.
And have we retested since then, or no?
They have not been retested yet.
Do we know what kind of system they put on it? Like, what kind of water filtration system they put on it? Whatever.
They only, I can find out for you, it's just like that, a filter light.
Well, yeah, just curious.
Are they, at some point, it would be just capacity and wouldn't be filtering anymore, right? So are they, I don't think you'd know that, or are they going to come check it and make sure? Like, is there, is time ready for how long the filters last?
Uh, I know there are custodian, bub, Nancy Dose here, and then Scott and Turner. And Mike and Dale collaborate on, you know, how long the filters last. So I think each one in the building is a little bit different, but...
Well, yeah, I mean, that's how often it is, so that's what makes it tricky, right? So it's not like being electronically monitored somehow. I mean, one bubbler could get used to it, and then, you know, it might be used more. So that, that just concerns me, to think about just relying on a filter without having real-time data of whether it's actively still really filtering.
Right, right. I'd have to ask those guys.
Yeah.
No offhand.
Yeah, no, I would expect. But that's something that would concern me.
I'll find out.
And the total payment for the lead so far is about $18,000, correct?
Yeah.
For the mitigation.
Those are all different things, different files that are associated with the water.
And it's still being flushed every day?
Yeah. And that's like the overtime, that we see that with the bump. I mean, in the morning, it's gone until we...
Right, I know.
Is there an end in sight? Or do we think that these costs are going to keep coming in?
Well, the end in sight comes from the testing, okay? So after they've put these filters on and after they've done these mitigation strategies, then they will test again. We don't have an end in sight until we know what, what we may need to change. And so we are following the advice of the water company and our, um, facilities director in terms of taking it step by step.
It sounds like it's improving, which is good news.
And just so everyone's aware, I did ask the finance committee where the money is coming from for this, and it is coming directly out of our budget. The town is not picking up costs. So we need to consider that as we are forming our budget. Is that we could have these costs that continue that we currently don't have a line item for.
So I have spoken with the town administrator. And one of the things that we discussed was once we had a better sense, we might be able to put a warrant article, but the warrant articles need to be in by a particular date. And we were hoping to have more information, but the reality is, is that the process is taking longer.
It's also very unlikely people are going to free cash shoes. They're going to have to put at least 100 cups of water, 100 liter cups.
Mr. Bowdrie?
And so the handbook intervention of water, I think that's just an update to find out what filters. Then, you want to talk about flyer distribution?
Is that the basketball flyer and the... Yeah.
So the Girl Scout one too? I think that's how the Girl Scout one too. I'm hoping to have Silver Lake football one come up soon too.
A little later, right?
So I'll make a motion to allow administration to distribute both the Girl Scout flyer and the Silver Lake, Summer Hoops flyer.
Second. Okay, vote Katie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And myself is a yes.
And then the, oh, safety trip, that is our third grade that they are going to Rhode Island for their trip against major approval since the testing.
How often, I mean... It's this, I get, I mean, I don't recall other stu... I mean, I, I mean, it's Rhode Island, so it's not that far, you know? But is there any risk with anything with the students leaving the state, or is it...
It's just the school committee's policy that anytime a trip is out of state, it has to be approved by the school committee.
Okay.
So even though it's Rhode Island, it still has to be formally approved by the school committee.
My only question was, this is just about approving out of state, like this is funded. We don't have to worry about that's going to impact budget.
Correct.
All right. Leaving more discussion, or? Okay, so I'm going to make a motion? Yeah, no, it looks cool.
I'll make a motion to approve that of state.
See, safe field trip.
I said trip. Should be clarified even further. Do volumes remain by all the defender?
Okay, so... You're on a second, or?
I'll second.
Okay. Um, all right, let's vote. Katie?
Yes.
Lori? Karen? Jessica?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
That's all.
Okay, financial report, Sarah?
Thank you. There continues to be a deficit in the PD line, which is the tuition reimbursement. The budget for FY '25 takes this into consideration. There's a deficit in the tech hardware and the guidance testing materials line, which are absorbed within the categories of guidance and technology. And there's a deficit in the special education contract services tuition and transportation lines. The deficit in those lines is $488,073. And that will be offset by FY '23 and FY '24 circuit breaker, leaving a surplus of approximately $56,000 in circuit breaker. The special education department also applied for extraordinary relief, and we anticipate an award of approximately $182,000 for extraordinary relief and $77,000 in reserve relief. So one of the things that my office is working on this week is taking that bottom line number, the bottom right-hand number on the budget sheets, and projecting out the costs for the remainder of the year. So the next time we meet, I'll have an actual, that number minus any salaries of where we stand.
Okay. All right, any questions? All right, um, Ryan?
Thank you. I have one item tonight to call our Student Opportunity Act plan, which every district in the Commonwealth needs to submit. It's due today by midnight, so, uh, the nick of time. Essentially, you identify between, according to the state, one and three evidence-based practices that this, that the district, in this case just Halifax, will work on over the next three years. So as you can see in the submitted document, I wrote up our work with the MTSS, the support teamwork. So that's technically identified as number one, effective support system. And number two is to continue to work with our collaborative teaching models, which are, is the work we've invested in, in co-teaching. This past summer, we had a co-teaching academy for all the schools in the district for teachers that would work together and support one another. Probably at the start of the year, they would have two days to work together to, um, plan how they would implement interventions and pieces like that. So this, a lot of the goals are similar to what Kingston and Plumpton would have, but each district is required to submit one. So with the approval of the committee, we would submit this tonight after the meeting and then wait for Desi's feedback. And it would be in place between 2025 and 2027. And lastly, it's just supposed to outline what we're dealing with our somewhat increased chapter 70 funds. And so that's why every district is asked to submit a plan. And then it's posted publicly, and everybody can see if we're making progress toward our evidence-based, um, practices.
So we'd have to, um, just have a vote to send it in, or?
I would request, if it would please the committee, to approve our Student Opportunity Plan. And then if approved, I would submit it to Desi after the meeting to meet, to meet the deadline.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve our Student Opportunity Plan and to submit it to Desi after this meeting. Second. Okay, we'll have a vote. Katie?
Yep.
Lori?
Hi.
Karen?
Hi.
Jessica?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. You're welcome. Jill?
I have no further updates for this evening.
Okay. All right, so now we can make a motion. Oh, actually, dates to remember, um, April 11th is a joint meeting. Is that for all the school committees, or?
It has been canceled.
Oh, it's been canceled?
Silver Lake rescheduled for, um...
The 9th?
The 9th.
April 9th?
Mm-hmm.
So it's the, the...
Is it still one on the 9th as well, or? It's just Silver Lake?
Just Silver Lake.
Okay. Spring vacation is April 15th through 19th. And our next school committee meeting is May 6th. Would someone make a motion to adjourn not to come back to regular session?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not returning to regular session, via MGL C-30A Section 21A 3 to discuss strategy with respect to lack of bargaining on our negotiation with the Halifax professionals. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and if the chair so declares. The executive session pursuant to MGL C-30A X-21A 7 to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law. Approval of executive session minutes of March 5th, 2024.
Second, second. Okay, roll call. Katie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jessica? Yes, and myself is a yes. Bye.